You ready for rest to get started? Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the November 10th work session of the Board of Terrence County College Board of Trustees. Before we get started, just want to take a moment to recognize all of our veterans. This is Veterans Week, so we want to recognize, of course, Mr. Kine and Mr. Hornsby for their service to our country and for the sacrifices that they made, and also all those students and faculty members and staff that have chosen to walk the, in this institution with TCC. So I want to just take a moment to recognize you and thank you very much for your service, both of you. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order since we have a quorum. We have any public comment? No public comment? We'll go ahead and start in on item number three, the review of board items, board business items. Just take a moment to look at those for October 13th, 2022. There's a draft available, and if you have any comments or recommendations on those, please let us know.
So I was going to point out that they are actually not in your books, and so we've got them to distribute to you today, so you'll be able to see them for next week and let us know if you have any comments on this.
Perfect. Do you want to take a moment to mention this about the board books since we're doing this now?
Sure. We are working on some process improvement that is not yet perfect, but one of the things that we are hoping to do is no longer build complete board books between work session and the meeting because so much of the information is redundant and you may have taken notes and that kind of thing. And so in that light, if those of you who want to and will work with you who have a different plan or didn't bring your book today, if you want to leave your book, we'll put your name on yours so you can get your notes back, and we'll sub out the new information that you need in your book and the new agenda and have those delivered to you tomorrow. We may get so good at this in the future that we can avoid delivery the next week by having it all ready for you to go on the Thursday of the work session, but we are not quite there yet. But I'll visit with each of you after the meeting so that we can work through that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Ellenese. Okay. We'll jump into trustee remarks. Do you want to take a moment to talk about your address? And I think Mr. Hornsby also had something he wanted to share. Ms. Kine?
Thank you, and I think we have some pictures. There we go. Thank you to Dr. Shawn Madison, President of the TCC Trinity River Campus, for the invitation to speak at the annual Veteran Community Luncheon this last Monday. The event was a beautiful tribute to our TCC student veterans who currently number at over 1,500 enrolled across the district this semester, and to our faculty and staff who are veterans and the TCC community that supports them. And somewhere, there's a picture in there that also shows our district's Chief Technology Officer, Mr. Bob Pacheco, there he is, who served in the Navy, but despite that fact, he and I are still friends.
Absolutely.
There he is. On a personal note, the luncheon was a special opportunity for me to share a little bit more about my grandfather, who was U.S. Army Captain Clark Duncan. He is a World War II veteran who passed away this spring, but he was the inspiration for my own decision to join the Army, and he was truly an example of honor, which was the theme of this week's Veterans Week events. His own life journey was similar to many of the student veterans who were in attendance at this luncheon. He used his Montgomery GI Bill to attend Phoenix Junior College, which later became the first of the 10 campuses that comprise the Maricopa County College District in Arizona. And then he finished his four-year degree at the University of Arizona. Places like TCC play such a special role in the lives of so many veterans and their families, and the programs and the services offered by TCC are yet another example of how important that intersection between military service and education is. The GI Bill makes higher education and workforce development a reality, not just for thousands of veterans, but for their families who can use those benefits as well. And my grandfather is living proof of how those impacts are generational, because what started out as a few credits at the local community college for him in 1946 became the model for me to earn my own bachelor and master's degree debt-free through an Army ROTC scholarship and the post-9/11 GI Bill. So thanks to grandpa. I'd also like to thank Mr. Angel Ayala, the Veterans Counselor at the Trinity River Campus, for coordinating such a special afternoon. And here you can see the Trimble Tech Junior ROTC Color Guard, who have supported this event not just this year, but for the past six years running. Tomorrow, as our nation observes Veterans Day, please thank a veteran for all they have done in defense of our nation, including our TCC veteran community, who makes Terrence County College such an important place for veterans to learn and to continue to serve in our communities. So thank you for the opportunity.
Mr. Hornsby, I think you went into, you did some, attended an event as well.
Thank you, President Ayala, Board. I was blessed to have the opportunity to be a part of the veteran celebration on the southeast campus of Terrence County College in Arlington, Texas. I was not the speaker, but I just gave special greetings, which was good for me, to just be able to give special greetings. But I was able to remind veterans of all that they bring, not just to school, but to the community, the leadership that they've learned, all of the opportunities for problem-solving that they have experienced as leaders, and to thank all of their families, who also give and serve while their military members are serving, whether they're parents or children or spouses. Everybody usually ends up getting involved some type of way with the service of that individual. So I was blessed to be able to remind him, the gentleman to the far right of the stage is the Speaker, retired Master Sergeant from the Marine Corps, did a great job in delivering his sermon. Dr. McDonald just passed her, defended her dissertation. She's now Dr. McDonald, is over the Veterans Program there at Southeast Campus, and so we're great, it was great to be a part of that. Of course, you see all the rest of the individuals there, so it was just a blessing to be able to be there. We had ROTC from Legacy High School, Junior ROTC that participated, and I got to do some As I spoke with them, of course, I'm a counselor, said, "What do you want to be when you're going to grow up? Where you going to go to college? What do you want to major in? What are you going to do?" And surprisingly, one of them loved automotive. "Do you know we have an automotive program?" "Who? TCC?" "Yes, yes." "Well, you do?" "No, I didn't know." One wanted to go, was trying to figure out a cheap way to go, but he was going to go to Tarleton, ultimately wanted to go to graduate, another place, so asking, "Why not just do your basic core curriculum here at Terrence County College, which is probably the least expensive you're going to get?" And those classes were transferred to that university, I've forgotten the name of the one he wanted to. And so just happened that Dr. Zeno was standing there, so she took over that conversation and finished recruiting him. Then there was a young lady, the young lady that's there, she's a junior, she was, we asked her where she had been, Barbara, she loves culinary. And, "Do you know, we have a culinary program here at Southeast Campus," and she did not know that. And I say, "And they even getting a new building?" She said, "I want to be a pastry chef." We have a wonderful pastry department in the class, and so they were all amazed, and I gave them a card so that they could make contact with me if they needed to about those things. So again, the need for making sure that our message is present and out there springs its head again, and we keep talking about that, and we keep, we're making improvements, but there's still room to make sure that all of us, wherever we go, if we see an opportunity to tell of the wonders of Terrence County College, we make sure that we do those things.
Thank you for those comments, and thank you for advocating for the college and for those students as well. Did anyone else want to share about an event that you attended with veterans? Comments?
No, but I would, I'd like to tell Mr. Hornsby, you better be careful, he's going to be a full-time recruiter in the high schools before long for TCC. I was going to comment on the REACH magazine that has just come out. I was on LinkedIn on my computer yesterday, and a story popped up about, that's in this magazine called "Beyond the Syllabus," and it's about a professor here at the Trinity River Campus, Jerika Jordan. Dr. Jordan is a professor of English, and it's a great story about, "There is seldom a one-size-fits-all approach to teaching." And this story goes into how she has learned over the years, it's a remarkable story, how she's learned to listen to her students and draw her students in to talk about the challenges and problems and issues they're facing. That's pretty good to get that up on the screen that quick. Thank you for doing it. I was just impressed, and I think it fits in with what is going on here at TCU, TCC, focused on veterans, for example, or focused on students that are having difficulties and challenges in their lives and helping them stay in school and be successful. Great story. If you hadn't read it, it's on page 52 of this current REACH magazine, and I just want to acknowledge the good work she does, and we've got faculty all over the place doing things like that.
That's right. Thank you very much for bringing that to light, and those are some very well-written articles, and the REACH magazine, the Collegian, and the Lens all have some very, very insightful information about the college. Dr. Morrison, hi. We're going around doing trustee remarks. Do you want to take a moment to talk about the event this morning?
Well, good afternoon. Thank you so much. Yes, I want to say thanks to all of the faculty, staff, students, and community that joined us today at the Terrence County College South Campus for the 11th Annual Intergenerational Community Conversation. It was a very relevant and revealing conversation, and I am certain that someone had an aha moment that will propel them to fulfill the dream that has been planted within them. And I want to continue that conversation today to encourage each and every one of you to reflect on your heritage and your legacy, to appreciate where you are now, but let's move forward to a wonderful future together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. It was very well-attended, very, very good, very, very good. I love those conversations.
Thank you. We'll have pictures next week.
Yes. Great. Okay, we'll head into item number four, review of proposed consent agenda items for board meeting on November 17th. For A, we'll go ahead and start with Academy Order Form and Master Services and License Agreement to Serve as a Course Sharing Platform and Course Sharing Fee Approval. Dr. Morales, do you mind, good to see you. Would you mind announcing your name and then also your title, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. Carlos Morales, President of TCC Connect Campus. Happy to be here this afternoon. So again, interim Chancellor LeBlanc, Board Chair Ayala, and members of the board, I'm here to present information in regards to the Academy Order Form and Master Services Agreement. I think there is a PowerPoint that we had prepared just to guide the conversation, and if we can go on slide number two. Okay, that's fine, I can do that. Slide number two, just to give you a context of what we are trying to do here, this is in regards to digital course sharing initiatives. The college is a member of the Digital Higher Education Consortium of Texas. The abbreviated name is Digitech. That used to be, a while back, the Virtual College of Texas, and we have been a member since 2006. And the way the consortium works is that it is a pathway and helps in the completion efforts to use online courses to close equity gaps and increase access to higher education. Students enroll in courses offered by teaching institutions, and that's the abbreviation you see TI, and that means that when the course they need is not available at their home institution, then is provided or accessed through the consortium. In this case, TCC will be a teaching institution in the marketplace. TCC, through its e-learning campus, TCC Connect Campus, will act as a teaching institution, as I mentioned, and functioning as a marketplace, this type of arrangement allows for the ability for institutions to generate revenue by providing courses, and we have, we have an analogy to explain that better. In this case, it's open seats, so any of the seats that remain open as the schedule is made available to students, those will be made available in the marketplace, and as I said again, or before, as a teaching institution. TCC will participate in that role because of the breadth of the programs and courses. The college has 40 fully online programs, and we deliver over 350 courses in multiple term lengths, which also is an attractive attribute of the operation. On the lower part of this slide, you hear, you see the name, Acadium, that is the middleman, if I can use that terminology, that provides the technological infrastructure for the course sharing and, of course, the further dissemination of those offerings. Here is the analogy, I hope that, you know, it makes sense and carries as I make the case here. So if you are familiar with the airline model, okay, Digitech will be that platform where the space, marketplace, for us to sell unused seats. So if we have a course with a cap of 30 students and only 25 of those, 25 enroll, using the traditional route, the five unused seats will be sold on the marketplace. This will allow us to ensure that the plane, in this case, the course, will run at full capacity and at a profit of those unused seats that otherwise would have been empty. This arrangement, most of TCC courses will be TCC students, because only the, those on the, on the lower side, right, on the amount, will be the ones placed on the, on the marketplace, and of course, beyond the minimum enrollment to offer the course. There is a cost to do this or join the platform. You see here some key elements. It is $3,000 a year, the access to the platform, and it is a heavily discounted rate, because we are a member already of Digitech, so again, this is a cost that we pay for the, for the middleman, if you will. There is a $10,200 year course hosting fee, also discounted, and there is a 25% enrollment fee per course that is charged to the teaching institutions. Here you see some of those benefits vis-a-vis the cost. TCC Connect Campus, and of course, TCC will have access to the entire marketplace of over 270 institutions that offer e-learning courses. So in the, in the rare case that a student here at TCC needs a course that is not available through the, through the regular course schedule we have here, they can also access Acadium, okay? But the way we have built the campus and built the operation is for students to stay within TCC and, you know, do not go outside to satisfy their educational needs. This will also allow us to provide or sell entire programs in the marketplace, and we are estimating about 300 Digitech enrollments per year in this endeavor. One additional element is that the teaching institution is the one that determines the price that will charge the home institutions, and the current range in the marketplace is between $200 and $300 per three semester credit hour, and the top two are between $290 and $300. In order for us to, to be competitive and attractive, and again, to capitalize on the reputation of the online campus for the, for the college, we are proposing a per-course amount of $256, and again, this is on a per-three semester hour, credit hour course, and this will allow us to receive $192 net, which is the in-district tuition, after the 20% fee that Acadium will charge us. So this table you see here provides that breakdown in terms of that amount, the Academy payment, which is $64, right, and then the revenue that we are estimating, assuming 300 students for the entire year. We have developed an implementation plan that goes like this. We are planning to offer between 10 and 15 sections, leveraging the eight-week term that is very popular at TCC, but at the same time is scarce in the marketplace. We have heard that there is a big interest in shorter terms, and we have experience in that, in that sector, if you will. So again, the seats will be made available to those, to those students, and this will allow us to test the marketability, the administrative and the operational needs, as well as collecting success data in these. as well as collecting success data in this first round, if you will. We will also review that data, the market interest, and enrollment data to then determine what other courses we will bring to the marketplace. Again, in the fashion of using the extra seats. We will, of course, report on the progression of those efforts and develop standard operating procedures for that endeavor as well. This will also help TCC contribute to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Strategic Plan, which is named Building a Talent-Strong Texas because we will be participating in a collective effort to enhance degree attainment. It's part of the completion agenda and also reduce time to completion. This is a long-term strategy to promote access to quality online offerings that are offered through TCC without the financial impact on district students or taxpayers. And that's why we are recommending setting a fee of two hundred and fifty-six dollars per three semester credit hours for shared courses. That's pretty much what I have. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you for that presentation. Dr. Morales, questions from anybody?
I have a question. How would a TCC student become aware of what would be available through this program?
The TCC is a member of the marketplace. So as we disseminate this information, we will share information about the marketplace. And in the event that the student need a class that is not offered here, the student can access the marketplace. So it will be through usual communication of advising, social media, and newsletters that we use here in the college.
Is this a new program just ramping up?
This initiative has been more or less two years in the market, if you will. And it is now that we believe that we are ready to join the consortium in this fashion.
Can, if I may add, we've been a part of the, what we call, Virtual College of Texas for several years. This is a transition to a new platform and a new system that's more sophisticated. The point of this is that people outside of Tarrant County can access our courses and enroll. And our fee to them would be what he proposed, just two hundred and fifty-six dollars. And so it's revenue-producing for us. And still, actually, we would be able to share our talent throughout the state of Texas.
Well, to sort of re-ask my question in a different way, how does someone become aware of the opportunity?
Is the marketing occurs through Digitech, which is the Virtual College of Texas. They are marketing that in each of the institutions that are members. So the students in those institutions will know, you know, we need X course, right? My institution is not offering it. I'll access it through the marketplace. And hopefully, they will see it in us and we will deliver it for them.
Okay. Question that ain't addressed. Mr. Bar. Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Hornsby.
You said that if your institution doesn't offer a course, what if a student out of district went through the Virtual College of, well, what did?
Digitech, yes.
I grew up, I was working here when it was Virtual College.
Sure, sure. That's fine.
Digitech.
That's fine.
And registered, could they still register for a course here through that even though they maybe really have been an out-of-district student before? Because the tuition is now, is cheaper.
Yes. They can enroll directly to TCC and still, you know, get the course. But in the case that they are enrolled in another institution, okay, it is much easier for them to, of course, stay at that institution because they are taking those classes and then take advantage of the route that is provided via the Virtual College of Texas. It's going to be institution to institution. That's, you know, one of those benefits.
So Carlos, the student would be paying, let's say they're at Houston Community College. They would be paying Houston Community College tuition. The fee, we would be charging Houston Community College.
Right.
The two hundred and fifty-six dollars rather than the student.
Correct. It's institution to institution. So again, repeating, it would be local rate for that student rather than out-of-county rate going directly to us.
Okay. I was wondering, see, I was a student out of district, but I've been coming here. And I find out about this, then I would just stop just enrolling directly to TCC, go through that, and I could pay two fifty-six instead of three, whatever you said, out of district.
Actually, less than two fifty-six because you will be paying local rate at your institution.
No, I'm talking, I'm living here, but I go here.
Oh, oh.
I sign up for classes here.
Well, then, then.
It's cheaper than, no. They're shaking their head, said no.
Can you ask that one more time?
Okay. Say, for instance, I've attended classes here as an out-of-district. But now I found out about Digitech. So I still enroll in classes, but I just enrolled through Digitech where I've been paying three ninety-something. Now I'm paying two fifty-six.
In order for you to pay.
Is there something that prevents, that stops that?
Yes, because in order for you to pay the two fifty-six, and if I capture your question correctly, you need to be enrolled in another institution that is part of the consortium, right? So institution X, that's your entry point that then allows you to get the two fifty-six versus the three ninety, whatever it was, out of county.
Thank you. I got it.
Sorry, it took longer.
Next question.
Yes.
On here, it says three thousand per year, per platform, and then another ten thousand. So we pay both of those per year?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Morales, just around the question about completions. So if a student is registered at, let's say, Houston Community College and they take one of their final classes through Digitech, right, at TCC, is the completion counted towards their home college? It is their, okay.
Yes.
Not ours. Okay, that was one of the questions. The other question I had is, how often will we have to reset this fee? Is this something that we set for, you know, the two fifty-six is that for an entire year? And we'll have to come back and revisit it next year? Or establishing it of some sort of schedule and how we're going to look at that?
Yes, I think that this will be tied to our rate. So if, in the event that there is a change in the rate we charge, I suspect we may need to update that because of the twenty-five percent fee that is captured by Acadium.
Okay. And you said that this is somewhat of a revenue generator for us. What do we anticipate? How do we anticipate you applying that money? Would that be, go back, right back into the TCC Connect, the general fund?
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Morales.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. I love the idea that we are offering this and it gives so many folks so many opportunities to take classes if they don't, if they're homeschools. I think this is probably very helpful for a lot of the rural colleges, I bet, for the rural college students.
This will help the smaller colleges. When I served a smaller college, we depended on what we called Virtual College of Texas, now the Digi, Digi Texas, for those courses so that we would have completers.
That's great.
Right, yeah.
That's excellent. Okay. All right, we'll go on to item four B, new program Teach Within Reach for Fall of two thousand twenty-three. Dr. Dan Luftgen.
Good afternoon, President Ayala, members of the board, interim chancellor LeBlanc. I'm Dan Luftgen, TCC South Campus president. I'm here this afternoon to request your approval of the Teach Within Reach Educator Preparation Program Continuing Education Certificate for Fall two thousand twenty-three. So there is a great need for this certificate. And also, it should be known that this is a post-bac laureate certificate. So a student may achieve a bachelor's degree in any one particular discipline, but then have an interest of going into teaching. And as you know, there's a great need within our public K through twelve schools and beyond for teachers. So this is that teacher preparation program that TCC can deliver to help fulfill that need. In two thousand twenty, twenty-one academic year, almost twenty-six thousand new teachers were prepared by the Education Preparation Program in Texas. And it's still not enough. Over three thousand classrooms there were without teachers beginning in the twenty-two, twenty-three academic year, just in Fort Worth ISD alone. And if you were to look at the other schools and vacancies throughout Tarrant County, that would be a much greater number. And to unqualified and underprepared teachers are less effective on average and are also two to three times more likely to leave teaching. So, and we've seen this with a mass exodus of teachers through resignations. And in some cases, retirements are up over fifty percent. So again, there's a huge void and TCC has an opportunity to help fill that gap. Current programs are offered at the, you can see the universities here. I don't need to read those to you, as well as other educator preparation programs. But again, as I stated, it's still not enough to fulfill the need. Teachers are leaving the profession in higher numbers than usual with increases in retirements and resignations. So there is plenty of room for TCC to help fill this particular need. The proposal also, too, is for Tarrant County College to provide a high-quality, low-cost, alternative path to teacher certification. What TC will do is offer a lower-cost teacher preparation program as well as an accelerated completion through eight-week course offerings, which if I were to go back to the previous slide, not all of those universities offer that accelerated completion timeline. So just the approval process, if approved by the board, it then goes to the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board for approval, then the Texas Education Agency, and then on to the State Board of Education Certification for approval. So those obviously take a little bit of time. And then we would be able to start promoting those courses immediately upon the approval of the State Board of Education Certification. So approving this allows us to move this forward. Additionally, this approval is significant because it would make the program eligible for Texas Workforce Commission funds, which is another added benefit to our students. I would, if there are any questions, I'd also like to acknowledge the South Campus Dean of Behavioral and Social Sciences, Dr. Shreya Taylor Love, who's in the back, has really been an architect and a lead on this particular program, as well as Isaac Rivera, District Director of Curriculum and Educational Planning. They've really provided the leadership for this over the last several years. And it's just my honor to bring it before you. So if there are questions, they're probably the best individuals to ask.
I have quite a few.
That's just a great segue.
I guess it was just a few months ago, I spoke with Dr. LeBlanc, I believe, about this because some of my moms in South Lake were interested. So forgive me, but I'm going to have a lot of questions.
Isaac has said he's the backup to the backup, so we'll call him for it if needed. Yes.
Okay, so the first question is, how much is this going to cost at the student level? And is it different for like math or is it one cost for all?
Dr. Taylor Love.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Do you mind introducing yourself and your title, please?
I'm Shreya Taylor Love, the dean of Behavioral and Social Sciences at the South Campus. So to answer your question, there is one cost. So our initial offerings, the way the Texas Education Agency operates is in your initial application, you get five requests. So our initial requests on the first application are for the EC through six core subjects, math, seven through twelve, so a secondary certification, and then technology education. We also have two supplemental certifications, special education, which is an all-level, early childhood through twelfth grade certification, and an ESL or English as a second language, which is also an all-level. So regardless of which initial certification that a teacher candidate takes, the price would be the same. The varying costs are going to come in certification exams, which are set by the state. So if you, which we'd love for all of our students, to be a math teacher with an ESL and a special education endorsement, that means you're going to take three certification exams. If you were going to be an EC through six core subjects with the science of teaching reading in ESL, then you might only take two. So the cost is going to vary from that side on the certification exam. When you also get into programming, there's not going to be a difference in cost for programming. The only other difference, again, determined by the state, is whether or not a candidate chooses to be a clinical teacher or to be an intern teacher. What that means is that if you are a clinical teacher, you have adopted the model of, it used to be the traditional student teaching route. So you were not paid. You were working with a cooperating teacher for eleven weeks. And then after that, you're certified and you're ready to go. Now, the state offers another option that you can be an intern teacher. That means that you have taken your content area test. So you've already passed the math, you've already passed the EC through six core subjects. And you can go into a classroom as the teacher of record, be paid a teacher's salary, and then you would pay intern fees to your certification program throughout your first year. And that's what all of the additional educator preparation programs that you saw, that's what they all offer. So that's kind of determined by the state based on which pathway a candidate chooses.
So what's the cost of that? I mean, I know you told me different variants, but I'm just trying to, they're going to ask me this.
Sure.
So I need to know the cost.
Absolutely. We're looking at a cost of roughly about forty-two hundred dollars for everything.
Okay.
That's program offerings, that is technology, text. The difference is if this is approved as a continuing education certificate through the coordinating board, then as Dr. Luftgen said, those additional funds for Texas Workforce are able to be used.
Okay. Then the rest of these questions are probably going to be really easy.
Okay.
Which campuses are you going to have courses at?
So we will be able, so this will be a college program.
Okay, so all the campuses.
So TCC will be approved as the educator preparation program. We'll have a home office, which would be at South Campus. That means if TA comes and says, let me see your books, they're going to go to one place. But course offerings, we, if approved by the State Board of Educator Certification, would be across six campuses.
Okay. And how many students are you thinking will be enrolled in each campus? I'm just curious.
Each campus is kind of hard to tell. And that is because we might not be, we might have start dates and end dates that are different. For instance, if the first cohort started at South, I might not start the second cohort in the spring at South. I might take that to Southeast or bring that to Trinity River. And so those would vary. It's also going to depend on our ISD partnerships. Right now, if we were to open the doors and tell Fort Worth that we have fifty spots for math, we'd have fifty-seven people
Right.
who would show up. EC through six core subjects, you know, there are five spots for kindergarten, but fifty-five people want to teach kindergarten. fifty-five people wanna teach kindergarten. And so earlier, you know, lower-level grades, lots of people want them, but those aren't where the positions are. So it's also going to depend upon our strategic partnerships, which we get calls every day, every week, from districts who are saying, do you have anybody who can come into this classroom? It's okay, they can be a sub, we'll help them finish their degree, we'll, you know, we'll get them certified. And so there's definitely a need. Also, the state of Texas is working on registered apprenticeship programs, so we could bring candidates in to work as like a TA or a teacher's assistant, while they are completing certification and then ready to move. So lots of options with this, just just because of.
So if there's a catalog or a book or anything that you get, I would like to have a copy of that when you have it, just send it to me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question at the last paragraph. It says the budget will be, the budget that will be recommended to the board will include proposed minor staff additions to support the program. That's fine. What kind of staff do you need for this program? I mean, additional teachers, I'm kinda trying to connect the dots.
Sure. So we would need a program director to start off, because it's a new program and we currently don't have that individual. Additionally, because it is an accredited program that has certification tied to it, we would need admissions counselor, we would need certification and testing officers because those individuals or that individual could be one when we start. Is responsible for reporting to the state, how many applicants we have, how many are accepted, how many, you know, all the data that goes along with that. And then what we don't currently have are field supervisors. So field supervisors are generally retired teachers and/or principals who are able to go into the field with the clinical teachers or the intern teachers during the first two semesters to do observations. We don't have those individuals currently because that title is tied to being in educator preparation program. So once we become an educator preparation program, we will need those titles associated with the program.
Who teaches the teachers?
Currently, our Associate of Arts in Teaching Program has two full-time faculty at South, two full-time faculty at Northeast. It is growing or starting at Trinity River, and also one full-time faculty member onboard at Northwest.
So that they would teach the teachers.
So they are teaching the teachers currently
Currently, okay, now.
and would be certified to teach in this program as well.
All right.
But they are not necessarily certified to be field supervisors.
Do we need to add more teachers?
We, we do. We do need to hire more teachers for people to become teachers.
Thank you as well, Mr. Greenhill. I think you had a comment.
Okay. Thank you for this presentation.
Absolutely.
I was at a meeting with Dr. Cavassos from Arlington ISD a couple of weeks ago, where he shared that the needs of that particular district are such that they are willing to pay for the certification and testing for teachers who who come to the district. We know that this is a long-term situation to grow a workforce. To what extent have you all already thought about growing this to scale? Because we know that this won't be fixed within the next couple of years.
No, not at all. And so the the first part of that is, we've been in conversation with Arlington ISD as well, and the paying portion is where that registered apprenticeship comes from. And so Tarrant County College is already a registered apprenticeship school, so adding this teaching apprenticeship would be a perfect fit. But we can't add it until we're official, and so that that would open the door. This is just a start. I mean, we, again, when we first started having these conversations about five years ago, the superintendent and Everman at the time said, but I need English seven through twelve, and I also need middle school social studies, and we'd love to offer all of that, and that is our plan. So the way the State Board of Education Certification works is, once we have been approved, we are accredited, not rated. At year two, once we get a rating, that opens the door for us to apply to add additional certifications. And so we'll be very intentional about adding those additional certifications, not just because we think they need to be there, but absolutely continuing those conversations with our ISD partners about where the needs are, because those look very different now than they did five years ago. Absolutely.
Mr. Horvath.
First of all, this is such an awesome, awesome, I wish you had, we had this ten years ago when my wife went through it, and she had to go all the way to Dallas, and it cost a whole bunch more money than this did. For the selfish reason there, but this is really important work. And so I'm glad that we're, we're doing it, you all have really done a great job. Will these other positions that we need, will these be reassignments or new hires? Like the advisor or the testing person? Would there be some reassignments from position, people that are already there, retrained and regained? She said, please.
Initially, as it relates to advisors, potentially, we could reassign somebody. But as the program grows, which we're confident it will, we would look at adding additional resources.
Yeah, so so we bring this to the board, including the positions we think we would need to get it started, because that is part of the transparency. You need to know, we approve this program, we anticipate great interest, revenue coming in, but there would also need to be resources that we would need to allocate for it. Initially, we do have individuals like Dr. Taylor Love, who's been working with this for quite some time, that can get it started. But realistically, we anticipate great interest, and we anticipate this program will be very successful, and we need to allocate resources to it.
Yeah.
And what is Lightcast? What is their position, what do they do?
So Lightcast, and Isaac can speak to that, is a system where we use, it's a forecasting system that says, this, it used to be Burning Glass. This position is expected to need this number of people in our area, you know, in the next year or in the next couple of years. So you have Lightcast data that Isaac can speak to, and then the, on the slides, you have specific to conversations that we've had with, like, Raul Pena in Fort Worth ISD. So one is across the metroplex maybe, and then the other numbers are specific to our partners.
Good afternoon, Isaac Rivera, District Director of Curriculum and Educational Planning. Just adding a little bit to what Dr. Taylor Love said, Lightcast, formerly Burning Glass, is a system that we use to pull data for the programs. Our focus is on high-wage, high-demand programs. So we look at the data to make sure that we are looking at what the demand is, forecasting for the programs, looking at the labor market, and that's what we use to develop new programs. So before we present that to you, the teams across the district need and discuss that data, assessing the need. We go to the academic council, and then we go to the cabinet before we come to you, presenting that need for the new program.
Okay, thank you. And do you know, I'm looking at the projected starting salaries on, from starting salary range for program completers. They sure look low compared to what the area is really doing now. And I don't know, I was wondering, who are they, where they get that, where they pull those numbers from? I don't know anybody starting in the forties now.
Lightcast pulls, pulls data from the labor market, the Bureau of Labor. And we understand that some of those numbers may be off based on the the current needs for the district. So there are some districts that are paying higher than that because of the demand that just came up, but that's why you see that difference in gap.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have two comments. I'm very happy to see this program come to pass. There was a similar program that was discussed and rumbled around twenty years ago with Dr. Carrier, Carrie Thompson from Southeast Campus. But I'm glad to see this come to bear. It's much needed. I think Tarrant County College can do an awesome job, fulfilling a great need. And for transparency, I was once the Director of Alternative Teacher Certification for Fort Worth ISD, and we certified about easily two hundred teachers a year. They later contracted that program out, and so now it's proprietary. But I'm glad to see this program be resting here at Tarrant County College. I know that it will be successful and that it will grow. I think it's important that we go ahead and do an approval, because as she mentioned, the three accredited bodies that have to approve this, and if it's gonna get off and running for fall of twenty-three, we're probably on a tight time crunch. But it's timely, it's appropriate, and I wish you all the best in it.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Any other questions, comments?
I wanna thank you all for all of the efforts that you've put into making this come to ideation, you know, from ideation to just actually implementation. I know I was in a meeting, I remember, and we talked about this. It's been a few, you did say that, Dr. Taylor Love, about five years ago. So we appreciate all the efforts that have gone into all of this. And Mr. Rivetta, you talked about some data that was very, very important, and I I wanted to share that I was in a Reed-Fort Worth meeting the other day, and some of the statistics related to teachers and the rates at which they're leaving are very startling. So I wanna congratulate you on, you know, really working with the community and meeting what the needs are, which is teachers. And so none of us would be here without a teacher. So thank you very much for that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Lovekin.
Okay. We'll move on to four C, which is to ratify non-credit tuition rates for academic year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and delegate authority to the Chancellor for interim changes.
Thank you, Ms. Ayala. So based on board policy, all tuition and fees are set annually by the board, and we bring to you the tuition and fees for all the non-credit courses that we offer. These are under workforce, any personal enrichment, any courses that we cross-list. So for example, we may have an art class, and some of the students in that art class will be taking the course for credit and some for non-credit. We cross-list them, merge them, and we're able to have a full class for a professor. We do quite a bit of that in kinesiology and art and and other subjects, such as that where our enrollments are not huge, and people often want to take the course without having to worry about a grade. So all of those courses are lumped together in the fees that we are proposing here for the non-credit courses. In terms of, there's a formula for, example, for the personal enrichment, we basically look at how much it costs for the faculty member, the materials, and and that's what we charge for for that course. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
I have one question, it's a very long list, and and there's a lot of, there are many of them that are quote "new" in quotes, and I'm just interested in how do you select, is there a trend, or do you, is there a committee or somebody that determines what's gonna be new and what goes out? Just kind of general statement on that.
So this is really similar to the the credit courses. The, we depend on the department chair, the deans, the vice presidents to identify interests. The non-credit folks work closely with community and look at what they're requesting. So we're quite entrepreneurial in that we use the non-credit coursework in some ways as a marketing piece to get people interested in a certain area, and then we transition them to the to the credit. A couple of examples would be the fire technology, non-credit course, courses, they can become firefighters, come back and earn a degree. So we do quite a bit of that. We don't talk about it very much, but that's, that's right. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
My, I had a question.
Yes, Ms. Wood.
So did the prices stay the same, or did they go up, or are they about the same as last year? I'm just curious, because we didn't have anything to look at from before.
I'm sorry that we didn't do that. They, we try to keep it just at whatever it costs us to deliver, and in most cases, the tuition has remained the same all these years.
That's great, considering we have a lot of inflation going on right now, so.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Dr. LeBlanc, are there any of these courses that are offset by grants of some sort, like GED or anything like that, that you could talk to, or these are?
Yeah, these are the courses that we charge tuition and fees. We do have some courses that we offer through grants, and that's of no cost to the students. And that would be, I asked Jennifer Hocken Schmidt to be here in the event you had questions related to the adult education courses that are offered through the Workforce Solutions grant monies. I don't, did you, were you interested in hearing from?
It might be helpful just to hear, so we can identify the, more so the differences. We have, you know, some trustees that may not have met Jennifer for one, and then maybe she could talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, Board President Ayala, Chancellor, Board members. I'm Jennifer Schmidt, I'm the Director of Educational Outreach. I currently reside with my team at the Opportunity Center. And so we are the TCC representative on the Tarrant Adult Education and Literacy Consortium that's led by our Tarrant Workforce Board. Those funds originate from our Texas Workforce Commission, and they are shared across Texas in the different board areas around our state. So we have several members of our consortium. We, as a consortium, serve a little over five thousand students. And as was mentioned by Dr. LeBlanc, we do not charge our students to attend our program. They go through an orientation and pre-assessment process. Of course, with state funds, you're going to have to do a little bit of paperwork, and so we walk the students through that paperwork. We try to make it as painless as possible. But the the grant does cover the cost for their high school equivalency class, or if they want to do English as a second language. We also have a bilingual high school equivalency class. In addition to those basic skills, we also do workforce training. And that training is supported by industry-recognized credentials. So any kind of workforce training that this grant covers ends with some kind of a certification exam, and then the students are hopefully employed. That's where our partners come in. The Workforce Board, of course, has a whole department that works with employers. We work with employers as well as a college and as a consortium to to support those students to employment as well. Any questions? Thank you so much for that, Ms. Schmidt.
Sure.
Are all the classes taught at the Opportunity Learning Center?
No, sir, they are not. So we have classes at each of the campuses, we have classes at the Opportunity Center, we also have classes at different off-site locations, like the Central Workforce Solutions Office over on Riverside. We have classes at, up on the north side of Fort Worth, at a location there. We, we really are expanding our service area right now, so we're reaching out to to new partners, so we can offer classes. For example, our Victory Forest location, one of the community centers in Fort Worth, we just started a partnership with them. So we are really trying to spread ourselves across Tarrant County, so that we are where the students are.
Do we also have some high school equivalency courses that are taught on the credit side of the house?
I don't think we have high school equivalency. I think we have ESL on the credit side.
ESL on the credit side.
Yes, sir.
And why would we do that?
That's a good question.
Right, so so real quickly, we do, we we offer. So real quickly, we do, we offer a couple of options for students. Not all students qualify for this grant money. And you may explain the criteria that they need to meet in order to qualify for the grant option. So we also offer ESL, ESOL pathway for individuals that are learning English and want to attend college, and those are, most of those individuals would not qualify for this grant money. And those are the individuals that we charge tuition that you will see in this packet. But you might explain the criteria.
Sure. So our students, to be eligible, they have a basic skills deficiency, so maybe they're functioning at less than a secondary education level. They don't have their high school diploma, or they're an English language learner. And in addition to what Dr. LeBlanc said, our grant has targets, but we also have outcomes that the Texas Workforce Commission holds us to. So our students have to submit to not just a pre-assessment so we can place them in the appropriate level of learning when they enter that class, but they are assessed throughout the program. Some students don't want to do that, but that's how we measure their progress, and it's how we also report the progress to the state to show success with the program, right? And also, they are expected to attend class regularly, just like our other students on the academic side. And there are, there are conversations with them about that forward momentum, right? So we don't want them to just kind of linger in that HSE class for three or four years. We want to see them progress because we are held to that as one of our deliverables with the funds.
Okay. The assessment is the T?
It's the cost is now. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just, just really don't see why, who would not qualify to be in the program for the free ESL classes? Because if you don't, if you don't speak the language, you're not going to be on the second-grade level on most of the exams and stuff, so.
And we want as many of the students that come to TCC to know of this option and to take advantage of this opportunity. Some of them may choose to do the self-pay option, but we certainly want to bring them in as many as we can.
And you all do the counseling, and you all make sure they know of those options, even on the, at the campus level?
We have relationships with the campuses so that those advisors and counselors know of our program. We share that information with them. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Anyone else have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to, is there anything else further you wanted to discuss about that?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. 4D is two-year contract for cellular service from Verizon for Tarrant County College District's iPhone fleet in the amount of $144,000. Mr. Pacheco.
Hi, I'm Bob Pacheco. I'm the Chief Technology Officer here for the college. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
In January of 2021, the Tarrant County College Board approved a two-year contract for iPhones from T-Mobile to be used by field services staffs such as real estate and facilities, IT, risk management, and the police department. This current board request is to replace the outdated T-Mobile phones with Verizon Apple 12 phones. This will ensure that the staff who spend most of their time outside of the office can receive job assignments, text messages, and emails without carrying additional devices such as laptops or tablets. The Verizon Wireless proposal includes 150 free Apple 12 iPhones, along with dedicated support representative and 24-hour, 24/7 support. Additionally, the college's first responder devices will be part of the Verizon frontline service, which encompasses priority wireless service, mobile broadband priority, and emergency response. This agreement will result in a yearly charge of $72,000. Over two years, we will save $43,500 plus a savings of $22,500 for the free iPhones versus our previous contract with T-Mobile. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Pacheco? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Thank you for that. Okay. 4E, amendment to sales contract with RBR Holding LLC for May Owen Center at 1500 Houston and parking lot at 1500 Throckmorton to extend terms of consideration period. Ms. Allenese.
Yes, so you may recall that we're under contract with Omni, which is doing business as RBR Holdings to purchase the May Owen Center. We had originally given them a period of time for consideration plus a 30-day extension, which they exercised, and their second 30-day extension actually would have required an additional $50,000 in earnest money that would be non-refundable. They are close to concluding their work with the City of Fort Worth to get this deal concluded, and so they asked for an amendment to extend that second consideration period to 60 days and also allow a refund of that $50,000 under the singular condition of if they don't reach a conclusion of that effort with the City of Fort Worth. We have no indications that they're not going to conclude. In fact, we've got a closing date scheduled for January the 17th. They are required to close, per this document, within 15 days after the consideration period, but there's some weekends and holidays in there that pushed us to that Tuesday, the 17th. And so we just wanted to memorialize that adjustment. We do think it's in the best interest of the college, certainly to get this sale consumed, so we're no longer maintaining that, or consummated, so we can, are no longer maintaining that facility.
Thank you, Ms. Allenese. Any questions or clarifications? Okay, thank you. Let's see, you have the next item as well. Resolution approving the designation of investment officers. Do you mind announcing your name and also your title, please? Thank you.
Yes, Susan Allenese, the Chief Operating Officer. So this is something that we do periodically to, I'm considered the investment officer, although I get a lot of support, obviously, from our investment advisors. But we do have a committee of people that serve as our investment committee, and then also are delegated to carry out some of the day-to-day transactions associated with managing the portfolio. Stan Vick has recently retired, and so we are updating this delegated authority to reflect these folks here, plus Stephanie, who recently moved from the foundation over to our finance department.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Allenese? I have a quick question. What sort of training is required, or is it just, is it just kind of ongoing?
It is ongoing. So we all go through the Public Funds Investment Act training. I believe every two years we're required to do so. A lot of this is activities associated with just sort of the transactions and booking them and so on with our investment advisor.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Okay, we'll go on to item 4G, which is the amendment, the scholarship criteria Exhibit A of the Mineral Management Agreement with the Tarrant County College Foundation to increase annual students served and maximum disbursement. Hi, David.
Good evening, President Ayala, Board members, Dr. LeBlanc. I am David Jimenez, TCC's Associate Vice Chancellor for Enrollment and Academic Support Services. Our enrollment and academic support services area includes our admissions and registrars, records, academic support services, financial aid, and a couple of other offices. One of the main programs, or one of the academic, one of the scholarship programs that we administer in our financial aid department is our Stars of Tomorrow Program. Stars of Tomorrow Program offers $800 scholarships to TCC students who graduate from Tarrant County High Schools in the top 50% of their graduating class, as long as they meet income thresholds and income requirements. We, the funding for the scholarship program comes from the Mineral Management Agreement that we have with the foundation, and the recommendation that we have here is that we, again, look at that Exhibit A in the Mineral Management Agreement, update the number of students eligible to receive the maximum number to 250, and then also update the maximum dollar amount that we would award through this program from $180,000 to $400,000. The reason for that is because, over the years, this program has had the same income requirements since 2008. We haven't adjusted those income requirements since then, and because of that, the increasing amounts of the Pell Grant Program, increasing tuition, also the scholarship, increasing, sorry about that? Where am I? The, also the devaluation of the income limits. What we're recommending here are three different things. We, to be able to get to the point of using the new maximums, the income that we're recommending with this change is going from the varying income threshold amounts that we have right now, that vary from household size to income levels themselves, to a flat income amount of $120,000. The second thing we're recommending is that we go from $800 per semester to $1,000 per semester. And then in order to do that, in order to fund the additional awards that we're talking about funding, going from approximately only 50 students receiving this program per year to about 250 students receiving these scholarship awards, then we want to amend the Exhibit A in the Mineral Management Agreement to show that we would be awarding up to 250 students per year, and then also increasing the annual budget from $250,000 to $400,000. This Mineral Management Agreement was signed in 2020. It has an exhibit that shows that we were only going to use $250,000 and award only up to 180 students. But if we increase these income limits and make more students eligible, we're going to need more funding to be able to cover all of those awards, and that's the recommendation in this memo. Any questions I can answer?
Questions? Clarifications? Nope? I do have a quick question. As far as working with the foundation, how does, how does that work? Have we already, is there, have we engaged with them already? Could you talk a little bit about that, Ms. Allenese?
So Reginald Gates has been in communication with them about this proposed change, and to be really clear, we did a lot of work on this agreement a couple of years ago, and the only reason that this exhibit is in there is just for them to be able to have some expectation of cash flow, about how much money would be drawn out at any given time. And with the accumulation of the mineral assets, they're well-positioned for us to fund a larger number of scholarships and at a higher level. So it should be good news.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. Also, are we going to establish a regular cadence about, you know, reviewing the criteria since it'd been a while since we reviewed them or going forward?
We do, we do want to do this. We haven't had an established cadence over the years, but we do, it is appropriate for us to be looking at these income requirements at least every two or three years, because without doing that, then what ends up happening is we, you know, award fewer and fewer students. The program helps fewer and fewer students. And so we want to do this at least every couple of years going forward.
Good, good. Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
And the change only impacts Stars for Tomorrow Program, not any of the other scholarships?
That's correct. Just the Stars of Tomorrow Program. Good question. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jimenez. Okay, we'll go on to item four, let's see, five. Okay, we've gone through all the consent agenda items. Review of proposed items for 5A, refresh of the South Campus Purchase Networking Switches for South Campus Refresh from General Data Tech LP in the amount of $1,222,349.14. Mr. Pacheco.
Between 2015 and 2017, the One IT Department acquired and installed Cisco networking switches across the district. The current and projected networking demands from students, smart classrooms, faculty, staff, power over Ethernet, and Internet of Things such as thermostats and HVAC controllers, means we need to refresh and upgrade the devices to ensure uptime, security, and stability. Currently, we refresh one campus each fiscal year in a replacement cycle that ensures each campus is updated every five to seven years as the older switches reach the end of their useful life. The current refresh cycle is listed in your board memo. The network switches on the South Campus have aged beyond their functional life. This request will enable TCC to replace the old 2900 series switches from Cisco with the modern 9300 series switches. These 9300 series switches are compatible with our Information Security's Office Zero Trust Architecture requirements. And I'm open to any questions.
What do you do with the switches being replaced?
We have a service that will take those and make sure, one, that they're cleaned up, and then they will sell them or distribute them, and then we will get a certain amount of money back from them.
There's still some value in them.
There's a little bit of value to them. Sometimes when the equipment is really, you know, we've wasted, then they're just disposal, and what we're more concerned about is making sure there's no proprietary information on there.
Any other questions, Mr. Bar? Okay. Ms. Wood, do you have a question?
Yeah. This seems like a lot of money, and I'm sure that that's what it costs, but I'm just curious, did we have any other companies bid on this?
We are a Cisco shop, and it's been decided for the last probably seven years, and to switch out of there at this point in time, we would have to probably do a multi-year plan to switch to a different, like Juniper or something like that.
So for the last seven years, we'd only use Cisco?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So just wanted to clarify that this includes the purchase of the product as well as the installation?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the next one. 5B, spend authority for up to $3 million annually to purchase standard computer equipment and accessories from various cooperative and DIR contracts.
In January of 2021, Tarrant County College Board approved a three-year agreement with vendors to provide computer equipment and related accessories. It was expected to save substantial sums of money compared to our prior transactions. Today, though, these multi-year agreements are not practical because of the ever-changing technology and the changes in the devices that we are purchasing. As an alternative, staff recommends combining Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR, and other Texas cooperative contracting companies into a competitive solicitation process amongst themselves for the times when TCC is purchasing equipment. To ensure the best competitive pricing while providing the district with the most up-to-date technology and devices, the staff recommends that each time devices and accessories are needed, the most current standards will be used when requesting competitive quotes from the vendors. The standard equipment and accessories that could be purchased using this method are enumerated in the board memo, and as you can see, the list is very comprehensive. This process will ensure that the college will optimize the funds spent to acquire technology that is current and ready for an environment at the best possible price.
Could you remind us again what DIR means? You said it, but I didn't get it all.
Department of Information Resources.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions, comments?
It just seems to me that this item and the previous item are sort of different strategies on acquisition. And to go back to the item about switches, how do we validate that that price is a competitive price in the marketplace for what's going on? I mean, there's some, the technology is moving very fast.
It is moving very fast, and we use several different vendors for like the switches. So we can actually bid directly against Cisco or resellers like SHI or CDW. And so usually, we're pretty good when it comes to the prices on the switches. The switches are more, you know, configuration main items versus what we're talking about right here in this last board memo, which are more consumables. And so there's a little bit difference in there. Where we buy in quantity for the consumable items, the switches are very much a high-demand item that are used by, you know, large institutions, institutions that are based on Cisco technology.
To follow up on Ms. Wood's question from a minute ago, we've selected General Data Tech for the switches. Were they the only?
No, when we talk, we had SHI, we could have gone through them as well, or we could have actually gone directly through Cisco as well. What we did is we did the quote out to all three of them, and then the GDT came us, gave us the best price.
I think that's really what her question was a while ago, and I would suggest that the, what we're trying to do, what I'm trying to do, I think what she was driving at is if there's some competition, we'd like to know that. I would argue that our report should have addressed that the total cost of the contract was put out to two or three different companies, and this was the one that selected.
All right.
That just gives, I think that would just give the board a little bit of comfort that the proper due diligence is being applied.
Thank you, Mr. Bar.
And we can do that, yes. We'll provide that information.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Any other questions?
I was just going to add, I think I understood your response in a completely different way, which makes me rethink how I understood it. I understood it meant to be kind of like we made a decision. I understood it meant to be kind of like, we made a decision either to be a Mac campus or a PC campus, and then you competitively bid it out. Like, we are choosing, because we've made the investment in Cisco, to remain that type of campus in terms of the platform, the technology that we use.
Because of the technology involved, yes.
Okay. So I think, then I just went to, and knowing that we have chosen Cisco as our platform, then we continue to competitively bid out the products that support that system.
For that brand, yes.
Yes, okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your comments and clarification. Yes. Okay. 5C is professional services agreement with Facility RX LLC for move management consulting services for the bond program on the Northwest and Southeast campuses in the amount of $1,611,311.
So you may recall that during the last board briefing, we talked about the complex moves that are required as we soon-ish start occupying the new buildings that are being built on Northwest and Southeast. There are multiple moves involved because individuals will be going into swing space while old buildings are demolished or renovated and replaced. And so this is a contract that covers both the Northwest and the Southeast planned moves. So it's a consultant who comes in and does all that complex planning for us and also facilitates the move. And actually, John Posh is doing a quarterly update in just a little bit, so if you've got more questions about that, he'll be up here for that purpose.
Thank you. Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Helenese?
I have the same question I had on the last item. Did we have any other bids, and was this the only company that we got a bid from?
Yes, I'm looking real quick. Should be an attachment.
And if it's on there, please just tell me where it is. I just didn't see it.
Yeah, I may need to flip through, and I'll point you to it here in just a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, yes, it is. So if you go right behind, so it's the third page, we had two proposers, or the fourth page, excuse me. It gives you the suppliers that submitted proposals.
Oh, and one other question. What is MWBE? Is that BE? I don't know, I can't see that well.
Yes, it's the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Program?
That's what I thought it was, but I wasn't sure. If you guys would put that on there sometimes, when you have an acronym, just like maybe out to the side, so those of us that don't know will know what you're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. Anyone else have any other questions, clarifications? I just, this was included in the original budget of all of them?
Yes.
Okay, this was, all right. And there's a mention on the memo about this is funded by the Northwest Campus redevelopment, but Southeast is also included. Can you explain that a little bit more, please?
Actually, I'm going to defer to John to explain why they did it that way. And I think it's just to manage the complexity of the invoicing and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and good afternoon. I'm John Posh with Jacobs, the Bond Program Manager. And that's why we did it, just to facilitate the management of the contract. It's, there's going to be, it's a multi-year process to do all these moves, and where we'll have monthly invoices. And our accounting system is very clunky to split-fund something and split-fund every invoice. So it's all coming out of the same fund, Fund 40, and so just to facilitate the management of the contract, we figured we'd put it all in Northwest. We do have the budget already allocated for it.
Mr. Posh, thank you for that. Another question I have, and I don't know if this is you or Susan, but what does this all entail? Because, you know, when I was just kind of dividing up numbers here, it seemed quite a bit per individual. So could you tell me a little bit more about what that, what a move, what that entails? Is that wiring? Is that, can you kind of go into that?
No, this is actually moving people and their contents. So there's a total of, at Northwest, there's three separate moves, and at Southeast, there's two separate moves. And these are big moves, moving hundreds of people each time. So it's basically just to move people and their contents.
Any other questions, clarifications? Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Mr. Posh. 5D, professional services agreement with Triad Consulting for District-Wide Security Master Planning in the amount of $1,490,706.
Yeah, so you guys are aware that over the last couple of years, that this board and staff have been heavily involved in bringing together, I guess, in the past, some siloed decision-making across the college, whether it's about our facilities or, and this is our security planning. We've done the facility master plan, we've done, you know, the facility condition assessment. And we've also been working on a strategy around smart building continuity. And one of the things that we recognized that we needed to add to that was planning for our security program. So we've talked about the camera devices that are around the college and how those are maintained, where they're located, how the data is managed, and so on. We've got an aging Code Blue infrastructure program with a major capital program that's underway. We've got building access standards. Many of our buildings are accessed digitally now. Many are still with keys, and so working our way through that. There's technology security around this. In addition, with many of the new devices, that we want to begin collecting new information from their cybersecurity issues and so on. So in my view, this is the last big planning exercise that we want to do, just to make sure that we're, A, taking into account what the legal requirements are for us, also making sure that we're bringing this activity together in a coherent way and spending our money effectively. So we've hired a firm with some expertise, and it'll be, I believe, a 14-month engagement for them to assist us with that.
Thank you, Ms. Helenese. Any questions, clarifications for Ms. Helenese?
There are conversations in there about different workshops that they were supposed to provide, and I'm assuming, which could be dangerous, that the development of the plans were the results of those workshops that they held with our faculty and staff.
So they will identify stakeholders who are relevant to the technical requirements and so on, and so they will organize that for us for participation. There will be faculty and staff that participate in that.
So they have not all taken place there, or some that still?
Oh, so, no, these are related to the work that they'll do once we engage them as a consultant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or clarifications? Okay. 5E, contract with Acumen Enterprises, Inc. for the Southeast Campus Early College High School Facility Air Condition Condenser Unit Replacement in the amount of $499,000.
There's not a lot to say about this one, it's pretty straightforward. So yes, replacing an aging and failing air conditioning unit.
Okay, all right. Questions, comments? Okay. 5F, amendment to contract with Talent Corporation LLC for the first optional renewal of professional employer service for skilled construction maintenance trades workers in an amount not to exceed $1,100,000.
Yeah, so several years ago, the board authorized a contract for staff augmentation for trades workers through our real estate and facilities department. That's common for us to be able to manage workload and the labor force, and this is exercising the first renewal of that agreement.
Any questions or clarifications for Ms. Helenese? Thank you for providing the attachment with the pricing that gives us a comparison of this year's rates versus next year's, so. Okay, we have the interim chancellor's report. Do we need to take a short break, or are we good? We'll take, we'll take just a very short break, and then we'll pick up with item six. Thank you.[1150.23]
Mr. Greenhill.
Mr. Greenhill.
I'm gonna start doing this, Bill. Bill? Okay, thank you. We're returning back from a brief recess, so we'll pick up with item number six, interim chancellor's report. Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc.
Thank you. So first is a report with the bond program, right?
Yes, and so as usual, you've got your monthly written report in there, and then we've got John Posh, and you've got the slide deck to make the quarterly report as well.
Is John here? We lost, we lost John. We could, do you want, do you want to go, is Andre here?
He just went after Mr.
You want to get Mr. Posh? All right.
I figured you were gonna do that.
Of course. You know that's right, okay. Andre, Andre will give a briefing on the fourth quarter M W B E report.
Sure, fourth quarter and full year too, combination. So, good afternoon, interim chancellor LeBlanc, President Ayala, trustees, thank you. I'm Andre McEwen, the supply diversity manager of Tarrant County College. This is a fourth quarter and the full year of our M W B program. Just some highlights, I wanted to refer back to last year to give you an indication of how well we're doing. Fourth quarter cumulative, you see, everything's exceeding previous year on the cumulative, fourth quarter by 5%. Construction exceeded goal by 8. We exceeded last year on the cumulative by 4% at 31%. On the bond program, we're doing quite well, all of our numbers trending and sustaining. Let me add that sustaining at the levels you see there. And that's indication of the trust of the subcontractor small women-owned businesses in our program. Specifically, these are the numbers, only one number in red, which is a good thing. Everything, all of our five categories, and our program, again, is based on the state of Texas hub program. And these are the five categories that targeted, the targets you see there. And we've exceeded all of those in the fourth quarter, except for one. Other services or things, services like our elevators, not elevators, I'm sorry, what I want to say, escalator, okay? We don't have any much spend in that area, so we're gonna continue to push. But in our commodities, our IT, thank you to the departments, construction, special trades, professional services, we're trending well. Fourth quarter, year-to-date, you can see, we've exceeded, and we sit at 31%, 50 million. I've been here 11 years, this is the second time, we've exceeded the 50 million level of spending with our small minority-owned businesses. So thank you to our departments, and thank you to our construction companies to support our program. Bond program, I just would direct your attention to cumulative for a quarter, 32%, 6.6 million. And cumulative, we're at 20 million of that 50 million is bond-related, so we're trending at almost 30%. So that's about 20% over last year when we started our program. So, again, we're sustaining, sustaining the utilization of our small minority-owned women businesses. The commodities, as well as the special trades, didn't have much in the bond, but primarily it's in construction. But we do have our two biggest buckets of professional services, architect engineers, and construction. So you'll see a soft, some soft numbers as relates to those other categories based on our bond program. Highlights, and trustee Woods, I apologize, I typically send everything in my outreaches to Reginald. So blame it on Reginald that I didn't contact you directly. So I will do better to make sure I coordinate with Reginald that I let you know when we have outreaches for you to attend, okay? These are, and as you know, everybody knows, and thank you for allowing me to be the point person on the small minority-owned business programs, these are all of the various programs. And I can say the market is very supportive, when I say market, Tarrant County, Fort Worth, in terms of supporting minority women-on-business programs. These are those various ones that you're well aware of, and most recently, Tarrant County Business Opportunity Fair on last week, we had probably 300-plus attend that event. So, and I was at an activity on yesterday in Dallas. So I just don't do Tarrant County, I go try to get folks from other areas to make sure they come over to Fort Worth and Tarrant County to do business. And just to highlight, this is probably the highlight for the closing, I just told Dr. Lufkin, we, one of our venture partners at the Southeast Campus, Pottery Construction, has just hired one of our T C C students who will be getting their associate degree in construction management in December, and they will be getting a job, a program engineer, a project engineer job, with an associate degree, with a salary range, I just got a message, between $45,000 and $60,000. So that's a highlight. So I want to thank Pottery, Pottery and the Hunt for that opportunity. And we're working with Skanska right now on a similar opportunity. So just want to highlight that in terms of the direct relationships to support our students in their career. And that is, I'm open for questions, and I apologize, Reg.
I think this is a good report, Andre, I for one appreciate it. I was looking at the page here about the internship from, and it talks about two to four students, and it looks to me like that, we ought to figure out a way to make that, expand that opportunity. We're spending, we're spending a whole lot of money with these companies, and they ought to be able to find more opportunities.
And I appreciate that, and we're working with all of them, including the architect engineer companies, and those that are getting contracts, to your point, trustee Bar, definitely.
Well, I can just tell you from my life experience, being able to be in a real work environment and see how things function, and what really happens is greatly different from being in a classroom. And the more opportunities we can create for our students, the better off we are.
Yes, sir, we'll do that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. So now we have John Posh. You just wanted to make a grand entrance, I know.
I'm so sorry, but I appreciate you giving me another chance. So I'm John Posh with Jacobs, the bond program director, and so this is our quarterly presentation. So we'll talk about financial update, our usual summary and statistics, and what's going on in the construction market, which is actually the big story right now. Our project updates, our M W B E, and our upcoming board actions. So financial update, we're at 950 million, that's in the yellow at the bottom, and these are the three funding mechanisms that we have, so the original bond of 825, the supplemental funding of the 113, and then the 12 million for the early college high school funding. So the three yellow shaded, we have 950 million total. Of that, we've spent 380, we've committed 383 million, so that's about 40% is under contract. And of that, we've actually spent 21%, about 200 million. So the lower part is the projects we have in progress. Really, right now, the main thing we have going are, of course, the two main big projects at Northwest and Southeast. And then there's some smaller projects of 3 G A P and M V P, so total of seven projects right now. So the big story right now is the, is the construction market as it has been, and we're hitting some new, some new roadblocks here with this, with this issue. So the cost inflation actually seems to be leveling off a little bit. So if you remember, past few quarters, we've been at 15, 18%. And year-over-year, right now, we're at about 10.4% is what the national index shows. And if you tighten that up to more recent, it even gets less than that. So this good news is nationally, the construction inflation seems to be tapering off. It's still going up, but at a lower rate. So where we have included in our cost projections, the 950 million that you see there, we are now figuring 10% inflation for 2023, and then 5% inflation for 2024. So the big contracts that we have coming up are really still almost two years away. So they'll be, we estimate to the midpoint of construction on these projects, which is when most of the materials are bought by the subcontractors. So we still have at least, we're estimating about another 15% of inflation, and we've got that baked into our cost. So if, if we're at that or less, we'll be, we'll be in good shape, so we'll see. So I'm gonna come back to material shortages, but labor costs typically they're 5% a year, and in 2023, they're projecting that to go up about 10%. Labor costs are about 25 to 30% of the construction costs. So not as big an impact as the material costs, but still significant. And then, of course, energy, energy costs, which affect everything, those costs are still going up. So the material shortages, right now, these are some things, the metals, the paints and coatings, cement, electronics. These are things that, that continue to be difficult to get. But what we're seeing right now, and I just got off a call this morning, a national market call that Skanska does every quarter, and right now, the trends that they're seeing match what we're, our real-world experience here. So what's happening is electrical gear and HVAC equipment is what, is the lead time on these items is just really going off the charts. So fortunately on Northwest, we had our electrical gear already ordered long ago, just because where the schedule was. And on N W O five, the first building that we're gonna open up early in the year, we've got, of course, all that equipment is in. The second building, N W O one, we're supposed to get our delivery on December 7th of all dates, and so we're just keeping our fingers crossed that, that will come in. If it does, then we're out of the woods with this equipment on Northwest. Unfortunately, on Southeast, we're not as fortunate as to where our schedule is. So they actually ordered the main electrical gear, so it's a switchboard, and it's main distribution panels, which are actually the main circuit breakers as the power comes into the buildings. And so those typically had a year lead time, so we ordered them last, the contractor ordered them last July. Our schedule calls for them to be delivered in July, but we just got a notice that they're not even gonna ship till January 2024. So a one-year lead time on this electrical gear is now 18 months, and they're still not guaranteeing anything. So what we are faced with on Southwest, on Southeast, is a scheduled delay of either nine months or six months. So we did a major shutdown last Sunday at the campus to try, and a solution that we have for the main switchgear, which is the potential nine-month delay. And we think we have a workaround for that, so we think we're out of the woods on, and we can avoid the nine-month delay. The main distribution panels, which is potentially a four to six-month delay, we're still not, we don't have a solution for that yet. We're trying everything, I mean, we're looking at, we're working with R E N F, you know, the, could we take this 30-year-old gear out of the buildings that we're demolishing at Northwest and use it on a temporary basis? And we're looking at, can we pay money to jump the queue? But the problem in the industry right now is these data center, companies that are building data centers, they are signing five-year purchase agreements for all this electrical gear. So when, you know, the entities like us, where we just have one or two buildings, we're not, you know, we don't get that priority handling. So, so we're not completely out of the woods on that, we're doing everything we can to avoid that, but potentially, we could be looking at a six-month delay to the Southeast project. So much more to come on that, and that's really, so this is really the first real hiccup that we've hit. You know, if you remember, we ordered, we, we knew this was coming on steel, we ordered our steel early, we got that just when we needed it. Of course, now the lead times on steel and some other things are going, coming back down. But unfortunately, where we're timing this HVAC and electrical gear, we're not, we haven't been as fortunate. So still working on that, and that's really the big story right now. So just, we're holding steady, you know, we always kind of report our diminishing buying power, so we're still right about 28, 29% since, of industry and overall construction inflation since November of 2019. And so we've still got 60% of the, of the money that needs to be put under contract. This is just, again, the ways that we're addressing volatility, so really, call your attention to the schedule strategy part of this, which is what we're implementing on, on Southeast to avoid, all the things that we're trying to do to avoid this, this schedule delay. Project updates, so just orientation, overhead of the overall Northwest campus. And again, the four buildings in pink are the new ones, the L-shaped one on the lower right is N W O one, and on the, the pink on the upper left is N W O five. So those are the two we've got under construction now, and we'll show you some, some photos of that. So this is N W O five, and this is the building that's ultimately, half of it is going to house the early college high school. So as you can see, we're really far along on this, we're right on schedule, we are due to open this, and I believe it's May next, we'll be substantially complete in, in February, so just in a few months. And then we'll do furniture and move in and, and all that. So in the spring, we'll be turning this building over, and it's, it's looking really good. This is N W O one, so larger building, somewhat behind in schedule. It's, it's on its own schedule, it's just gonna be, it takes longer to build than the, than N W O five. So this is still coming along, this is gonna be beautiful building, main, you're looking at what's gonna really be a main entrance to the campus, and in the foreground is the south parking lot, which is what we're, what we're working on now. This is the north parking lot, so you can see, they really have, they really do fill up their parking spaces. The far half of this, closest to the far building there, is what we, what we did as part of our project, and then we just restripped the near part of it. So this is the same area, what it's gonna look like when it's finished, and what it looks like now on the left. So they have, it's very hard to install this, anything on that very high ceiling, so they have all this scaffolding, and on top of that, what you see in the brown on top of that left-hand is what they call the dance floor. So that's a, a, a working surface that's about eight feet below that upper concrete, and then they're, they're using that to do the sprinkler installation. So, and that is the learning stair, this is learning commons, or the, the, one of the main atrium spaces in, in N W O five, N W O one. So just to quickly go through kind of where we are, so G M P three, these are the two buildings that are under construction. So M V P and, and interior finishes and exterior finishes are, are under construction. You can see that we're pretty far along with those. G M P four, the work authorization one part of that, which is the parking lots. So as you can see, we finished the north parking lot, and we're working on the south parking lot, trying to get that, we're figuring June 23 completion, we're working on, on hopefully shortening that up. G M P four, which will be, was, was actually just approved, this is some early work to get a jump on some of the demolition and new greenhouse, and some small renovations we're doing in W A T B. So that was what y'all approved at the October board, and we're, and we're getting started on that work. And then the final thing, G M P for the, for the final two buildings, that'll start to go out to the market in 2023. So this is the overall schedule, the three red bars, that the top one is, you can see, is the, the two blue bars on the top red schedule is where we are on the two buildings, so getting pretty close to finishing. The middle red circle is the, is the parking lot, we're about halfway through that. And then the lower one is the, what was just approved, and we're getting started on the work authorization for the demolition, which will happen over the summer. So on the bottom left, you can see I put a little thing on there where we saved five months. So recent versions of this had us going into 2026, and what we did was, with this work authorization two, it enabled us to save five months off the schedule, because we, we took the main building demolition, and we've sequenced it in a way that we can start the demolition on the buildings that are actually in the way of the footprint of the next buildings, and get started on those next buildings while we, while we do the, finish the demolition. So it really helped us save five months, which is, was a pretty big cost savings also. So on Southeast, just again, an overall view of where the campus is. And the two orange rectangles are the two new buildings that are under construction now. The colored part of the main building is what we're gonna be doing as a renovation in 2024. So this is where we are on the south academic building, quite a bit, the steel framing is done, we're putting in metal deck, and on top of that is port, each of those metal decks is a concrete floor slab. We're already doing the, this is a couple weeks old, so we've already got a lot of those floor slabs placed now. So construction is coming along right on schedule on the south building. And a little bit behind that is the front entrance building, so this is S E O one, and this is gonna be the new main entrance to campus. This is the east parking lot, there, we finished this up for the start of the fall semester, and they're using it now, as you can see, we still have a long lead time on the light fixtures. So they're, we're, we're working on getting the light fixtures in and do, finishing up some landscape out there. And as far as status, so in design phase, we're done with construction documents. We're working on the F F N E, which is fixtures furnishing and equipment, so we can start the procurement after the first of the year on those. The wayfinding and signage, the, the overall wayfinding and signage, the component on both of And the two orange rectangles are the two new buildings that are under construction now. The colored part of the main building is what we're going to be doing as a renovation in twenty twenty four. So this is where we are on the south academic building quite a bit. The steel framing is done, we're putting in metal deck. And on top of that is port, each of those metal decks is a concrete floor slab. We're already doing the, this is a couple of weeks old, so we've already got a lot of those floor slabs placed now. So construction is coming along right on schedule on the south building. And a little bit behind that is the front entrance building. So this is S E O one, and this is going to be the new main entrance to campus. This is the east parking lot, there, we finished this up for the start of the fall semester, and they're using it now. As you can see, we still have a long lead time on the light fixtures. So there, we're, we're working on getting the light fixtures in and do finishing up some landscape out there. And as far as status, so in design phase, we're done with construction documents. We're working on the F F N E, which is Fixtures Furnishing and Equipment. So we can start the procurement after the first of the year on those. The wayfinding and signage, the, the overall wayfinding and signage, the component on both of these projects, we're working that into the, the actual project. So working on that, and then we're in the procurement phase for this move service consultant that you've, that you're seeing on the agenda this month. In the construction phase, so you can, as you saw, structural steel, MEP rough ends are, are underway now. So, and then we got, we're finishing up on the east parking lot. So our schedule, so the red line is where we are now. You can see how far along we're about, I guess about thirty five, forty percent complete with the construction schedule on the buildings. MEP and infrastructure, so still, still the, you know, as the, as the capital improvement plan comes to fruition, we will be incorporating some of this into, into those projects. And we're continuing the implementation on a couple of small projects that are not affected by that, that effort. These are those two projects, so we're closing out these two projects at Northeast and Southeast. Three J A P, pretty much the same thing tied into the capital improvement plan that's upcoming. And there are two three G A P projects that we are working on now. So it is elite classrooms at Northeast and South. So we're finishing up the ones at South, and then we'll be done with the ones on Northeast in March. And then the, the district wide wayfinding and signage program also. So M W B E reporting, we are ahead of our, so let's see, so quarterly, spending the last quarter, we're ahead of both of our goals. So construction and professional services are what we track. So we're ahead of our goals on spending this quarter. We're a little bit behind on the spending goals inception to date, just because we haven't quite caught up with the spending on the professional services yet. But as you can see, the commitments are what we're really tracking, the bottom part of that, that's what's under contract. So we have contracts for both construction and professional services that are above what our goals are. So as Andre had said, we're, we're tracking really well on construction on M W B. So upcoming board actions, it really just is what we have today, the, the professional service agreement for the move management consulting. And so right now, we don't have anything for the next few months. So that's it. Any questions?
Specific to the Southeast campus. I know twenty twenty four is kind of a ways out, except maybe not really. Are there any enrollment trends? I'm looking at both of you while I ask this question. Are there any enrollment trends, especially as we trend upward, that cause you concern about delays creating traffic jams in instructional areas? Where enrollment at some point will eclipse the availability of the space?
We are taking donations for extension cords, just to go into our other building. Thank you, Mr. Capola, President of Southeast Campus. We are real fortunate on the Southeast campus that the two new buildings are not interfering with the operation of the campus as it is now. It was just sitting right there. So there will be no interruption of instruction if we go another six months. The difference would be that we were planning that in the spring of two thousand and four to start shifting to some online classes. This will keep those classes back online. Culinary will be able to stay where it is as long as we don't, I don't know what the plan is as far as vacating that building. Now I'm assuming that'll shift the six months with everything else.
Right, everything will just shift.
Everything will shift. So if everything shifts, we just stay as we are now, which means we move to fall, which gives us the summer in order to do a lot of the work that we were going to try to do over spring break. But thank you for the question.
I have a quick question. Back on your slide twenty nine, you talk about district wide wayfinding and signage program. And this is something sort of a pet peeve of mine, for lack of a better term. I, I'm frustrated with the way our buildings are identified. Where are we on the naming convention? We're, we're talking, am I right, we're in?
You, you were about to get a briefing, and we've got one in between on the sustainability plan, but then you're going to get a wayfinding briefing today. Yep.
I retract my question. I guess I ought to study my notebook better.
On the slide, you talked about the Southeast Campus Expansion Program update, particularly around the moving services consultant that we just, that was just presented. What, can you talk a little bit about what you mean when you talk about the design phase? Once we, that group is determined, then we go into designing how this move is going to occur. What, can you articulate to me what that means and what they'll have to do?
The, the design of the move, you're right specifically about the move?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand around the moving consult, services consultant, because you had a, here that, they're in the design phase, so I just wanted to.
Oh, we're, for the moving consultant, we haven't started working with them yet. So perk, the design phase was Perkins and Will's design phase, actually.
Okay, all right. So it's not necessarily the consultant that we're talking, it's just a matter of internally, y'all were figuring out the design. And then once they're engaged, then they're implementing it, is that correct?
Absolutely, yes. We've been working for a year plus, planning way ahead for all this, because the moves are very complex. And so, yeah, so once we, we're, we're teeing everything up, doing the advanced planning that we're going to give the moving consultant and say, this is, this is the plan.
Okay, so we developed the plan and they, they just executed, is that correct?
Basically, yes. We give them where everybody is going, names and from and to. We turn that over to them and, yeah, and they execute it.
Thank you.
My President, I just have a comment, a suggestion that nothing beats the real life experience of being on campus while you're in the midst of all this planning. And I, I'm certain that your staff does that quite frequently. But I just really want to encourage that at all levels, for your people to be there at all different times of the day. Nothing quite reveals the essentiality of excellent building facilities as does the student experience, particularly during the heavy use hours.
Absolutely, and we are, especially like, for example, at Northwest, we're there just about every day monitoring the parking, what's going on there, and the Southeast internal building circulation and things like that. So yes, we're, we're living it also, not quite as much as Dr. Capola and Dr. Blank and Baker, but we're, we're trying to stay plugged in.
Okay, unless there are any, are there any other questions? You do, okay.
Pursuing what we were talking about a while ago about internships and opportunities, I think it would be beneficial from your all's position in, in this whole construction program to look for opportunities. And I, I would ask you to try to figure out strategies. I don't know if, if there are any opportunities within Jacobs, for example. But we ought to be finding opportunities for our students to be, to do internships.
Yes, and the, the construction management has a program that is an internship program. We pursued that last year and it, it didn't, there were a couple applicants, but it didn't work out with them. So we'll, we'll be re-looking at that.
I, I think, and if there's something we can do internally on, on the college side to help make that happen. I just, construction industry is going to be here forever, I believe. And creating jobs in this industry is something we have potential to, to help with. So I would encourage you all to explore that, given whatever opportunities that are out there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
So next is our wayfinding.
Actually, are we doing sustainability first?
No, I'm sorry, it's Sustainability Master Plan.
Everybody's very excited about wayfinding today.
I'm so excited, yes, I will be able to find my way, I like that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll kick this off real quickly, and then I'll turn it over to Walt Williams from our Real Estate and Facilities Group. And then he's got our consultant Allison joining him remotely, I believe, as well. But we included two things in your board packet today. One is an informational memo, and this is similar to what we provided to you last March before the initial presentation of the Sustainability Master Plan to show you sort of the linkages between the concurrent efforts with the digital smart building master planning that is happening that's a little further ahead, and we're working on specifications for a lot of those devices for the use cases. Obviously, that's very closely intertwined with having sustainable and energy efficient buildings. You all funded the first phase of our Sustainability Master Plan that's focused on the physical environment, and that's what they're here to report out on today. There's a lengthy report in your book. They're going to cover just a few highlights and provide some illustrations of the conclusions that they drew. But we would ask that you spend some time looking at that document, because it'll guide our work plans in the coming years. And we'll be seeking your endorsement in December on that. Subsequent phases include operations, so things like how we manage garbage and, you know, things, and water and, and things like that is next. And then the third phase is working on having a curriculum component to sustainability planning for the college. And so those will be upcoming. But anyway, lots of reading material for your pleasure, and, but just wanted to, to point you to those documents, and I will turn it over to Walt.
I'm Walter Williams, Director of Facilities Engineering for the college. And my teammate is online, I'm going to have her go ahead and introduce herself, that'll be a good sound check as well. Ally, could you go ahead?
Certainly, good afternoon. My name is Allison Wilson, I'm an architect and the Sustainability Director at Air Saint Gross.
Okay. Interim Chancellor LeBlanc, President Ayala and the board. I represent about twenty eight hundred participants in this process. And I think it's safe to say that we're all excited at the culmination of the Phase One of Sustainability Plan here at T C C. You've received, I believe, a copy of the draft of the plan. Again, it's Phase One of, of, of a projected three. We'll have to see how that plays out as we move on, and we'll talk about that a little bit. But we really look forward to your input and appreciate your support over the years. As I said, Allison is online. She's going to kind of highlight the plan, and then I'm going to bring it home, run the anchor leg and talk about next steps, a little bit about engagement, and then about, I guess, the action that we're here really to, to inquire about and get your concurrence on. And after that, we'll field questions. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to, to Ally, and she'll start on phasing and schedule.
Awesome, thanks, Bob. Just before I get into this too far, my screen came up for everybody?
Yes.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. So as Walt mentioned, we have undertaken this Sustainability Plan and designed it as a multi-phase process so that we could get this first chunk that addresses physical plant and facilities out and broadly circulated in the community as quickly as practical. When we had initially formulated this plan, we believed that this first phase was going to include three content chapters. One that dealt with green building principles, one that dealt with energy, and one that dealt with water. And that's what we had brought to all of you in our prior conversations. As Walt mentioned, through this first phase, we've engaged twenty eight hundred people as part of these conversations and survey mechanisms. And through that dialogue, we, we understood that really the green building principles piece was being covered in other places sufficiently to meet the demand. And the community with regard to sustainability was really more interested in how we talk about accountability and reporting. So that this isn't only a document that, you know, can be printed or can be reviewed online, or that it isn't something that sits on a shelf, that it is something that has tangible accountability mechanisms embedded in it. And as Susan mentioned, and as Walt did as well, the intention is that this work would continue in either two or one phase moving forward, depending, to address more operational aspects of sustainability as well as that sort of engagement with instruction and sort of broader communications and outreach mission of the institution. We've been working on this since June of last year. And you can see the sort of timeline of when we've had the opportunity to engage with various stakeholders across the campus. We had the opportunity to do the Sustainability Survey last November this time, and that really garnered a substantial response rate and really strong consensus about sustainability within the T C C community. And we're very excited today to be here at launch with all of you. This is a really big milestone deal, this, you know, you don't get to do this very often. So we're really excited to be here to be able to launch the plan with all of you. As Susan mentioned, we're just going to hit the highlights a little bit. The plan itself is about sixty pages, and that has been included in your packet for your further review. Within each one of the content chapters, there are a small number of numbered goals. The first number indicates the chapter in which it appears, the second indicates the number of the goal so that it can be very easily accessed and referenced as you move forward. And each one of these goals has a set of strategies or tactics associated with it. So sort of drawing from a cross section within the chapter, you can see a variety of the things that we're talking about when it comes to accountability. So there are already tools within real estate and facilities work that help to support accountability. Those include the technical design guidelines as well as the educational specifications. We anticipate that those could continue to evolve through the engagement process. There was a, there were significant requests for greater transparency and communication. A good chunk of the information that we shared early in the process with participants was new to them. And so having some kind of sustainability focused website that could dashboard some of this information and really increase its transparency, seems like it would be meaningful to both the T C C community and the broader, you know, sort of constituency, as well as the submission of T C C's first H C Starz report. And you may remember, we had talked previously about what the Association for the Advancement of Sustainability in Higher Education is. It's an industry organization that's used by hundreds of colleges across the United States to report on the same types of sustainability related questions. And so it really supports benchmarking and can be renewed at regular intervals. So it can really help track progress over time. Thinking about energy, we have five goals within the energy scope of the plan. The first deals with Scope One and Two greenhouse gas emissions to support greater accessibility in the document. We've been very clear about the definitions for all of these pieces. We know that sometimes sustainability gets a little technical and a little jargony. So there is a rich glossary, both in the back of the document as well as sort of embedded throughout the, the work. We are looking toward how we decrease energy use intensity, and again, definitions are included in the plan, as well as how we maximize clean and renewable electricity purchases. And Walt will have a little bit more to say about that as well. Linked closely with decreasing Scope One and Two emissions are also goals specific to unique utility streams. So we also have goals associated with electricity and natural gas consumption, and that really gets toward the efficiencies. And again, you can see sort of a cross section of the strategies and tactics. There are many more in the full plan for your consideration and review. Within water, we have three. With, the T C C is in a position to better understand the three major end uses of its energy. And so our goals are oriented around those three end uses. One of those major end uses is for irrigation and water features, which is all exterior to the building. The second is related to cooling tower efficiency, which is how buildings stay cool in these hot Texas summers. And then for increasing the efficiency or decreasing the use of indoor portable water. So that's all of the water that comes through, you know, sinks and water fountains and water closets and all of those sorts of fixtures. And again, you can see the sort of cross section. So in each one of those content chapters, there are illustrations of both current data, you know, up to the most recent fiscal year that we had available, as well as sort of projections of where we hope T C C will be able to move through the implementation of the strategies and tactics that are identified in that portion of the plan. Walt, I'm going to go ahead and turn it back to you.
Okay. So we'll talk about our next steps now. Basically, we have three major categories of that outlined here. The first, I think, is, is the real key towards really kicking up our sustainability game, and that is to hire, make a, hire of a, a champion, for lack of a better word, for sustainability, a full-time position, someone who can focus on this, you know, for the entirety and with all the breadth and depth of their days here at T C C. It's probably painfully obvious, I'm an engineer, I'm, I'm not a sustainability guy. And that's a very specialized field that a very specialized field that really gets into some aspects that I don't have. And we really need to fulfill that and flesh that out. So the hope is to hire, we have a position budgeted, full-time, a sustainability person. The obvious first things they would do is oversee the balance of this plan. In other words, get the Phase Two and Phase Three, however that shakes out, completed, develop a long-term plan. Just comparatively, some of our peers, I believe Austin has a staff on sustainability of about five to six. Dallas has about seven folks. So we're going to start with one and kind of see where we go. But that person would be key. They know, they know the community and they would be much better adept than in-house expertise is currently helping us flesh out that plan. And then lastly, they would initiate those first stages of accountability and reporting with ASHE, which is, again, Association for the Advancement of Sustainability in Higher Education. So that's kind of the first leg of the three-legged stool here. The second is a smart building program. We're into Phase Two on that, nearing completion. Hope to report out on that in the spring. And basically, that's taking that from a conceptual level into actually incorporation into design guidelines, looking at our systems, not kind of generic systems, looking at what we do and specifically coming up with solutions where we can make our buildings smarter and leverage that to be more sustainable. So again, we have a full-time position budgeted for that. We're currently trying to figure out a deployment mode. Do we start in one building? Do we do one campus? How we do that. Develop an operations plan. It's going to take some internal changes in the way we do business. So we're working on that as well. And the next kind of concrete step in that is to solicit what they call a master systems integrator to help us begin an implementation once we come up with a deployment mode. And then lastly, utility management. Number of actions here that are very concrete, I believe. Currently, in our current electricity contract and the backdrop of this is we're contracted for electricity out to 2032. Okay, so we had some very long-sighted folks that preceded me that got us in that position. We have extremely favorable rates and that was a really a good decision. You know, if you've, if anybody here's changed their electrical contract lately, they know it was a good idea to try to lock you in a while back and we did that. But within that, we have certain percentages of that that for which we have renewable energy certificates, which basically says we're using green energy. So we have some gaps in that span between now and 2032 that we need to fill in for that. And we're currently trying to put together a proposal to fill that first gap, which is from basically from 21 to 25. You may say, why 21? That's already passed. But you can actually retroactively do this as well. But those would require, of course, board action that there's a cost to that. And we're putting together a proposal to show you that cost and see if that you're in concurrence, if that's a good thing to do for TCC. Natural gas, you might have noticed in the text, and we've talked about it a few times, we haven't had as much success reducing natural gas use as we have electricity. And we really need to dig into that. There's lots of reasons. If you've ever been out to Northwest Campus and seen when the fire folks blow off those large amounts of natural gas, we don't have a way to segregate that currently. So we're working on that and then some other plans to try to be ready for the next big freeze that we will undoubtedly have at some point. And then lastly, start and explore options for beyond this 2025 term when we don't have renewable energy certificates, including possible onsite solar. So that's, we're trying to get our arms around that. It's something that's coming and we have to be prepared for.
Could I ask, what is a renewable energy certificate and how's it work?
Basically, it's an accounting transaction that says the energy that you are using is sourced from a clean source. It's not that, you know, you can segregate something that came from a solar plant and came through the wires here, but it's an accounting exercise that certifies that that percentage or that percentage that you say is renewable actually was sourced at renewable.
So what's the benefit? How do we use that to our benefit?
Basically, what it does is it displaces our greenhouse gas production, not production, but usage or what we put out, again, not through a direct line from through the wires, but in an accounting sense. So Ally, you might help me.
Sure. Yeah. So would you like more information? I don't want to jump in if you don't, if you're satisfied.
I don't quite understand what the benefit to the district is. Do we, is there monetary benefit?
No.
It's an environmental benefit and it is a, it is aligned with the value propositions that many of your students and constituents understand about the institution's operations. So when you generate solar or any kind of renewable energy, there are multiple things that can be owned. There is the infrastructure of the generation. That would be the solar panel or the wind turbine or what have you. There's the operations and maintenance associated with that infrastructure. There's the actual energy that is produced. And there is the renewable energy certificate. That is the environmental benefit of having generated that energy in a clean, renewable way. And an institution can, and an energy generating power can own any or all of those four elements. And so what happens right now is that TCC goes out into the market and buys energy at, you know, and it has a contract for a certain rate. And then it also purchases renewable energy certificates that are on the market to offset the environmental impact of the electricity that it purchases.
Can I add one other thing? So one of the things that we've talked about with the board is whether there's opportunities to have owned infrastructure for that. So more solar panels and things like that on our campuses. And the way I understand it right now, the market for the renewable energy certificates is such that it's more cost-effective for us to do that than to invest in the infrastructure ourselves. However, that market is changing somewhat. And so that's part of what Walt was referring to, is that we'll continue to evaluate that. And whether there's additional energy, we would want to self-generate by expanding. We do have some solar panels on, is that South Campus?
Yes.
Today, but would we want to expand that when that shifts a little bit, that it's more cost-effective or appropriate for us to own and build rather than investing in the larger market that, you know, creates the benefit that everybody's looking for?
Okay. I'm not sure I understand it, but I'll follow up later.
I've got a really cool video too that I shared a long time ago, but I'll share it again because it was very helpful for my understanding of it as well. So I'll send it out to you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So if those solar panels, wind turbines, whatever we have, if they're owned by another company and they break or they are damaged, does that company repair them or is that up to us?
The company is responsible for it.
In our case, that's up to us. We currently have operation and maintenance contracts currently that we pay for them. They are, I would assume if it was something like a hail event or something, our typical insurance would cover that. They are about on a, I believe on a five to 10-year warranty. I'm not sure which. I can find out as far as the panels, the solar panels, the wind turbine, I believe, is out of warranty currently.
Can I add one other point of clarification? So we do own on a very limited basis some here at the college that we are responsible, as Walt just described. When we're buying the renewable energy certificates, somebody else owns and maintains all of that infrastructure. So that's not our responsibility at all. It's not them owning any infrastructure on our property. Does that help?
Say that again. I'm sorry.
So what Walt was referring to is the, where we happen to have invested in solar panels on the South Campus where we own and maintain those.
Right.
When we're buying renewable energy certificates, again, it is sort of an accounting thing. You're making an expenditure that's voluntary for the purpose of them having invested in renewable energy production. And so they own that infrastructure wherever it is and you're supporting that and benefiting from it rather than building your own. So they're responsible for that. It's not on our property. It's wherever they're generating the energy from.
Okay. And we're just buying it from them?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? Next slide, please, Ally. This slide was just intended to make sure that we, you know, and you're ushering us through this process and reviewing the plan and all that, that the engagement pieces that we engaged in were satisfactory, I guess, to the board. To kind of recap, we had, start off with visioning sessions where we brought in sets of stakeholders to kind of orient them. What is sustainability and what are the elements of it and that kind of thing? We had focus groups after that to get, again, now that they were oriented, you know, what do they think about how TCC should treat sustainability? And we updated folks in these meetings and also had a big district-wide survey. But again, we just want to make sure that the engagement that was, took place in this phase anyway, was sufficient or if it's not, if you have suggestions on how to do it better in the next phases. So that's kind of a question I'm springing on you here, but just wanted to get your thoughts if you have any.
I do have a thought.
Okay.
And I think this is more specific to the board.
Okay.
And how we can engage in this planning. When we went through the budgeting exercise four months ago or so, there were a number of new FTEs that, and this is not unique to sustainability, it's across multiple different areas, where we did receive brief information about the why behind the new positions. And I'm wrestling with whether or not it would be more valuable to have a more in-depth conversation about, for instance, when I see things like develop a long-term staffing plan, that obviously is a signal to us that we expect to see growth in this particular area. That'll apply to other areas like Title IX and other things as well. Is there a more appropriate way for us to receive this information so that when we go through the next budgeting cycle, it's not the same exercise of here are four more lines. We need for you to approve this now and we'll talk to you about the why later. Can we interject the development of a staffing plan before we have that exercise again?
That's very, that's very doable and not too different from when we brought you a new program. And what does that mean? In addition to the curriculum, there are resources that go with that and we prepare you for that prior to approving and moving forward.
One thing I'll offer is a clarification here. O'Conne's not with us today. He was a little under the weather. But since he's joined, one of the things that he's been working really diligently on is the organizational chart, how those positions are used. So that the two FTEs that are identified here were actually out of their hide of repurposing and reorganizing and so on at no cost. And so, so I just wanted to isolate that here. But to your point, as we work on future budgets, being really clear about as we're changing positions. The other thing I would mention here as well is, you know, it's hard to do the analysis where it's a net gain because you're investing in buildings that are more efficient and so on. But at the same time, doing the work well will result in cost savings and good business decisions around how we spend those capital dollars, but then also our operating expenses associated with the utility costs and so on. So I mean, it's a little bit fuzzy there, but I wanted to just let you know that in this particular instance, they are not additive. They are in their existing team. But we will absolutely do more next year around positions.
I have a question. Excuse me. I have a question. So the wind turbine that we speak of is the one by the Energy Technology Center on South Campus?
Correct.
So it's out of warranty. Does it still function?
Yes. Yeah, we have an annual maintenance program for it.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the second thing, do we still have an energy audit arrangement with Texas A&amp;M?
We do. They've completed some work here recently at the Opportunity Center as far as an evaluation. And they will be going into a phase of implementation on that hopefully in the next six months or so. So that's making that building more efficient.
Does this whole process speak to our corporate citizenship regarding climate change?
That's the reason we're here for the most part with the Sustainability Program. Yes.
Okay.
And we're, I would say this though, you know, the other facet of it is, you know, it's people, environment and economy. So we're not going to ignore any of those. We're going to focus on all of them. Our heretofore, I would say, it's mainly been environmental and economy. The people side of it is where we really need shoring up, where we're hoping the new sustainability position will, with that background and how to do that will lead us in that direction.
Thank you.
Well, I would, I did have one comment. You asked for recommendations. I think the decision to initiate a membership in the AASHE is a very good idea. What other colleges and community colleges are doing is something we ought to be looking at, it seems to me. So I commend you on the fact that there's been as much broad input across so many groups and whatnot. I think that's been well done. But there, what, what others are doing in the industry, so to speak.
We work closely with peers. I would say Dallas College recently had their first ASHE rating. Kind of, they got their score. It was a summer. I think they were, I'm not sure what they scored, a silver or something. But they've initiated. We work with them closely in, for example, the job description that we have for these positions. We work with all our peers. We, last spring, one of the best things I've been to in years as far as any kind of conference, TCU held an energy summit with as many higher folks that come. There's people there as far from Texas Tech, but there were, you know, little bitty people like Texas Wesleyan there as well. So just getting with our peers and sharing best practices and sharing ideas. I think we're fairly proficient at that.
That's good. On your smart building program, you talk about solicit master systems integrator.
Yes, sir.
Begin implementation. Is that a staff position or is that a contract?
No, that's a contract.
Contract.
A consultant.
There's a lot of work's gone into this and I for one appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chancellor, I have an ask. Just gave me a brilliant idea that we have all kinds of well-trained, certified, educated, experienced people to come and speak to us. And I think it would be great that as we get presentations to the board, that in addition to their job titles, we ask for just a little bit of background on industry qualifications. We're happy to do that. We have a lot of talent. Thank you. Walter's one of them. You want to start that off, Walt?
Just kind of a...
You're a PE. Tell us what that means.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm a registered, they're not registered anymore now. They're licensed. They switched that for some reason. But I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Texas. I am Fort Worth native, kind of cut my teeth in this area at Texas A&amp;M. Happy that they're coming to town. Had some discussions today about how to leverage some of the successes we've had, you know, with the group that they're bringing up here. They don't, there's not a presence up here like there is in College Station for this kind of work. And it's been very successful for TCC. And I'm hoping maybe if they can have a presence here, it'll help the North Texas, you know, they're kind of South Texas oriented to some degree or Houston-ish oriented. So I don't know how much more you want, but...
That's a good start.
Okay.
And we have a A&amp;M-TCC engineering partnership on the South Campus.
Right.
That's in its first year. So we're excited about that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. I think we've got one more here. Slide, just again, you've already...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm an equity warrior.
Okay.
Ally, want to tell us a little bit about your professional licensing certification background?
Certainly. Yeah. I am a licensed architect. I have been working in sustainability I have been working in sustainability for, let's see, the last 15 years. And my work includes both architecture and planning work. That includes high-performance buildings, whether those are the seeking lead certification or net zero operations. And then I've had the opportunity to do, I believe this is my sixth sustainability plan for an institution of higher education. So this is what I do every single day.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So lastly, here we're asking, in whatever way is proper to ask, for endorsement of this Phase One of the plan in concurrence to initiate Phases Two and Three. Again, initially, when we first came to you, that was projected in 2023, 2024 fiscal years. But what we would like to do is get that sustainability hire made and get someone who's more versed and more experienced in this area to help us project, you know, what, how long that should take and to lead us through that. So I wouldn't get too stuck on those dates. Hopefully, it's quicker, maybe longer, I'm not sure. So that's the kind of overall ask here. And with that, any more further questions?
We will ask you to take formal action in December, so we'll bring a board memo to you asking for that endorsement. So you've got the next month to take a look at the 60-page report that we provided. We still need to insert the chancellor's transmittal of that document as well, so you'll receive that. If you've got any questions between now and then, certainly just give us a call and we'd be happy to meet with you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you if we could meet with you if we had some specific questions because we do have some new trustees that may not be familiar with the history behind some of this. So that would be very helpful for them to have a moment to chat with you. This was a lot of good information. It was very informative. And I think we've made some really great strides, so I want to thank you because I know this is, this takes a lot of work and a lot of effort. And I'm glad that we have a vision and we have a plan, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Now we get to listen to Margaret and her wayfinding presentation.
Thank you, interim Chancellor Lebonk, President Ayala, and board members. My name is Margaret Lutton. I'm Executive Director of Institutional and Strategic Planning. And my background is I have a Bachelor of Architecture from Texas Tech University. I worked with architecture firms for 10 years in doing, designing hospitals across the Midwest until I started teaching full-time in 1997. And then I started working with real estate and facilities in 2010. So that's my background. And today, I'm here to talk to you about wayfinding and signage. So let's see. We're going to begin with an overall vision, scope, and timeline. We'll move to physical and digital wayfinding, and then we'll wrap it up with nomenclature and next steps. So our vision was to create environments where everyone is welcomed in an easy-to-navigate way. We want to celebrate the sense of arrival and maximize the experience on each campus. Our focus was about first impressions, learning spaces, wayfinding both physical and digital. The team consisted of the Campus Character and Quality Focus Teams for Nomenclature Guidelines. This was led by Lisa Benedetti, who is a Divisional Dean on Northwest Campus, and wayfinding led by Mike Tankersley, Director of Facilities Operations. And you know our champion, Reginald Gates, who was heavily involved throughout the process, and with the help of Program Manager Kenneth Rogers. You can also see the various team members and firms represented. We had several individuals from each campus and multiple disciplines, as well as Campus Character and Quality Overarching Advisory Panel. We also involved other principals as well as a part of the process. And I do want to introduce somebody today who led this process as the project manager, Jade Ansley. Jade, will you please stand up? I have to tell you, this woman worked for a solid two years, having meetings three and four times a week with hundreds of different people, multiple disciplines. She managed the contract and did a fantastic job, so we'd like to thank you, Jade, for all your hard work.
I have a question. You said that Reginald Gates was part of wayfinding?
Yes. Yes, he was our champion.
The story is that he always gets lost when he's guiding trustees through the congressional offices. So you are a wayfinder. Okay. Thank you very much.
He did a great job leading us.
He did a great job.
Yes. That's all right. So the scope included both physical and digital wayfinding, but what it didn't include was informational and marketing signage. The digital signage refers to the web, cell phones, and devices, whereas the physical signage was for directional purposes, building names, and space or department names. Our timeline began in November of 2020 with programming and then moved to schematic design, design development, and then the technical design guidelines. Construction documents are being handled by our architecture firms on Northwest Campus Redevelopment, Huckabee and Gensler, and the Southeast Redevelopment, Perkins and Will. The implementation will begin in March and May of 2023 through 2025 as buildings are completed. The physical wayfinding signage begins with the sign type families. And I know this slide is hard to read, but as you can tell, we have multiple types of signs for various scenarios throughout the campuses, both interior and exterior, and will be placed strategically in various locations throughout the district. So we took the basic sign types and we completed mockups. And you can see the top photo is from Southeast Campus, the bottom photo is from Northwest. So we actually placed these signs on the campuses. And then various focus teams and campus administration reviewed them from a vehicular standpoint as well as a pedestrian view. We also viewed mockups of interior signage as well. One of the exciting projects on the horizon are the monument letters, which will be located at each campus entrance in a strategic place for visibility from high-traffic arterial streets. These letters are 10 feet tall by 25 feet long and 2 feet wide, and they are climbable for selfie purposes and used for district branding. So we're very excited about this project. These will be on each campus. In addition to the Campus Character and Quality Focus Teams, we had meetings with each campus, the president's cabinets, institutional planning team, as well as stakeholder groups such as emergency operations, police and fire, website, IT, ad aster scheduling, and real estate and facility systems. We created a wayfinding nomenclature survey, which had 2,718 responses from students and staff with one of the highest response rates for a survey in the district. We placed mural boards, which are digital post-it note, a type of digital program for post-it notes, at each library where students were encouraged to provide feedback. As we coordinated with other principals for naming suggestions, they provided information as well. So that was physical wayfinding. Now on to digital. What we want is a mobile-optimized, web-based wayfinding tool that allows for flexibility, generating directions from home to destination. We wanted to improve what we had with Google Maps and create an internal process to keep wayfinding up to date as campuses grow. We also wanted to increase awareness and promote the digital features of the website to students and visitors. We want to support our web communications. The completion of this effort will coincide with the final completion of physical wayfinding. So recommendations and features from the operational plan are already implemented. Once the nomenclature changes are in place, we can be made live and coincide with the physical wayfinding, the full features will be available online. Now on to nomenclature. So what are we going to call our buildings? We're labeling each campus with a two-letter identifier. And notice that South Campus is no longer SO because Os and Is can be misconstrued as zeros and ones. From a student perspective, currently, our campuses are named similarly and subsequently, the building IDs for these campuses become too similar. Because of this, we identified alternative campus names and prefixes to allow students to quickly and easily identify and locate each campus. With those two-letter identifiers, we are going to include two-digit numbers and create a four-figure strategy to work with our existing systems where four figures are required. These building signs will be illuminated at night, and these are going to be large on our buildings and very easy to see from a distance. As you can see here in the Northwest Campus example, we are labeling the buildings according to the four-figure identifiers. The numbering is sequentially labeled in an intuitive way to allow for campus expansion. We certainly want to remember our donors and those we want to recognize. These will be last names only along with a building identifier. To plan for any potential future donor recognition, there will always be an available space above every building ID. This allows for a donor or a recognition name to be added at any time in the future. This is still a working concept, and it's in partnership with the TCC Foundation. And in conclusion, we will discuss next steps. We are currently working on construction documents for the Northwest and Southeast Campus to be concluded, completed this month and December. Implementation will take place as new buildings come online through 2025. And the remaining campuses will use Technical Design Guidelines to follow the same sign types and be coordinated with the master plan to be completed between 2023 and 2025. And that concludes my presentation. I'm now open for questions.
So when I go to the Northwest Campus and I'm driving up the driveway, is there, each building is going to have a Northwest One or a Two? Is that right?
Each building will...
Each building will be one or two and with a name above it?
Yes.
Okay.
Or three or four.
Not A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Okay.
Right. It'll be, it was suggested by the branding strategists with all of their background in institutions and campuses that the numbering system was more identifiable. So we wanted the campus to be identified and then the number of the building. They said that was more rememberable than having an acronym definition. That's what we were told.
I've been waiting for this a long time.
A lot of us have.
I think it's good. I think the plan makes sense. NW01, that could be the Ann and Bill Greenhill building.
Yes, it could be.
A small contribution, a big contribution.
And then we will have a program where we all discuss the losses that we have been through going through our campuses. Especially, well, yeah, all of them.
Margaret, this has been a long meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good work.
We're excited. We're looking forward to it.
Great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next is a briefing on tuition rate revenue analysis. We mentioned previous meetings that we would have this information for you today.
Yes, and we're not looking for an answer today, but one of the things that we mentioned during the budget process this last year is that you do need to make a decision about tuition rates well in advance to affect the next fiscal year because those conclusions would need to be drawn in early spring in order to begin with enrollment and so on. So we wanted to give you some information to look at and then perhaps start providing staff some guidance about the consensus of the board about what you might want to consider. So just a reminder, and you've seen this information before, this is what our per semester credit hour is compared to our peers. Some time ago, the consensus was that we wanted to be affordable, and we've obviously maintained that. And in addition, we have not made a change since 2018, 2019. At that time, it was intended to be a three-year commitment, that we would maintain stable rates at that time. At the conclusion of that, based on where we were in the pandemic and with declining enrollment and so on, it was not viewed perhaps as an appropriate choice at that point to make increases, but this is just the history. As you can see, a $5 increase would raise about $3.7 million annually. So the other thing we were asked to provide is some information just about our workforce. And it's hard necessarily to draw, or not workforce, excuse me, student population. It's hard to draw concrete conclusions around what this data should tell you, but it does give you a sense of some of the challenges that a number of our students face as they're trying to improve their circumstances and obtain an education. In addition, what's relevant, because one of the other variables, obviously, that we think about when we're setting the budget each year is where we sit from a tax rate perspective. And so we wanted to give you that comparative data as well, just as a reminder. And these are the rates as they were adopted in 2023, just recently. And then finally, just to give you context about what portion of our total budget tuition is responsible for, we wanted to give you this as well. Obviously, the lion's share comes from our property tax. We've also, and you can see it, 271 million. That's after our state appropriation, which again, will be in flux this next year with the legislative session. We don't have clarity yet where that will land. And then it shows you that our credit hour tuition is at 56 million. And that is it. I don't know if you want to have any discussion or share some thoughts on what the board is thinking about this for the future to maybe prepare us for additional discussions in the coming months?
I just have a quick question, please. Susan, state appropriations, that has decreased, I know, over time. Can you tell us what that's?
So it is decreased as a proportion of our overall budget.
Right.
It has grown somewhat each biennium as a dollar amount.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually, I probably should have included that history in here as well, and I can share that with the group. We've looked at it before.
That'd be great. And then the only other question I had was, where you said the $7, the $5 increase would raise $3.7 million annually. That's based on the enrollment today?
Yes, that's just taking, doing the math of a snapshot of what our current enrollment is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's an estimate.
Thanks.
Reginald, a more serious question. Has the TACC, CATT come up with an agreement on the ask? At some point, you may want to discuss that with us or someone else with the...
Yes, sir. We've planned to present in January in conjunction with CCATT and possibly even TACC. Ray Martinez may be here as well. But, and the chancellor can speak more to this, but it's moved more to a outcomes-based funding model. And that's what they submitted as a result of the Commission on Community College Finance. And it's supported by TACC, the Teacher Association, as well as the trustee group. But chancellor, you might want to speak to it.
No, you did that. Well, they're shifting from funding based on enrollment to student outcomes, such as the number of students that graduate with a certificate or a credential, the number of students that transfer to a university, and so on. Not too different from the metrics we use with Carl Perkins and other external entities. So we will be prepared. When we looked at our current metrics on the recruitment and retention of students, those metrics are aligned with what is being proposed to the legislators.
Is that the commission or the funding? Are you talking about the commission structure or the funding?
For the funding.
Funding, okay. And I know that Janine at some point asked that there be explained to us the structure of taxing districts and servicing districts and so forth. I know we have lots of presentations that are given to us, but it would be important for us to understand how we are presently structured for the funding because there are lots of, we're one county, and so we're one service area, but there are several taxing districts that have larger serving areas. But anyway, this is something that I think would be explained.
That's correct. So like you're talking about, for example, Austin Community College will have funding from the City of Austin and Round Rock and not the rest of their service area. And in that instance, how they've managed that is if the student lives in the City of Austin or Round Rock, they pay a lower tuition than the students that, and so on, and that's how they've managed it.
It's something that helps people understand.
Yes.
How we're funded. I mean, just basic ABCs about how we're funded.
Right, and they didn't have any specific recommendations, to my knowledge. They were more focused on the formula that they will use to, for allocation.
Yes, and the notion of having colleges to self-compete, so that your performance was based on what you were doing versus what a partner school might be doing. So, and setting things like ceilings for tuition for dual credit, though some of us don't charge, others that do, and they compete within those service areas by going to someone who could offer it cheaper. So to your point about how.
As you can see, this is complicated, so maybe some explanation.
Dr. LeBlanc, I would like to suggest, when during the course of the year does our staff really start the budget process? It may never end, but.
Right, so we've been starting in March, and we've talked about starting earlier than that, which is why we're starting the conversation about tuition now, because we really, and actually, on the campuses, we're asking for the vice presidents and presidents to review staffing models and what they anticipate they will be needing next year, because it takes a very long time to go through all the stakeholders and all those pieces that decision-making steps.
Yeah.
Well, my experience in the budgeting process at the city and other places has been, you have to make, early in the budgeting process, you have to make some assumptions, and I would like to ask that that be a discussion with the board early on. As I think about the legislative session by March, we're not going to know what the legislature's funding plan is. It may be the, it may be May 31st before we know, but we're going to have to make some assumptions along the way. And part of what I'm driving at is, I'd like for us to have as open a process as possible for the members of this board to understand, and the people out, our constituency out across the community to understand the decision, the decision points, I guess I'm driving at. You've been through the city budget, you know that backwards and forwards. I think you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
In the first couple of years I was on this board, we had no input to the budget. It was laid on the table, and I thought that was wrong at the time, and it's gotten better each year, and I think if there's a process where early on, we understand the assumptions being made and the decision process, I think we'll have a lot, a lot better feeling about it, and when we get down to time to adopt the budget, I think we'll have stronger support around this table, that we're on the right track. So.
Yeah, I started my career as a budget analyst, so you can imagine.
I remember that.
Yeah, actually, you were mayor at the time. So I do want to comment on a couple of things. So Dr. LeBlanc is right, that we start the process in the February-March timeframe with kicking it off and starting to solicit input on the expenditure side with all of my colleagues. One of the things that we're continuing to do this year is, we've shared with you before, is all of the workforce cleanup and compensation and classification study, all those kinds of things that will continue to inform that side as well. What we've been doing, I think, the last couple of years, is holding a workshop in June with the board to start to aggregate that information and share it with you. The revenue side's a little trickier, to be honest with you, because as you can see, the lion's share of our budget comes from property tax, and we don't have that information until the end of July, so we get a really preliminary tax roll in June. What we're missing all the way up until the very end is having a real clear understanding of that new revenue rate and all of those kinds of things, and so it ends up pushing us into August of trying to have those conversations. But you're correct, we make some assumptions along the way that what that looks like. On the tuition side, you know, because of when spring registration would occur, in many ways, that's a philosophy of this board discussion to have early, about where you want to be among your peers, what's affordable to students, what we're trying to accomplish, and then that would remove one more variable from that analysis about what resources we have available headed into the summer. So that's just one way to look at it.
And one other piece is that as we identify priorities, metrics, those should inform assumptions, those should inform the direction that we take in making decisions for the budget, and several of us were used to that at one time, yes.
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you.
So I was just going to ask you, if whenever you have an opportunity to maybe provide us what that calendar would look like as far as.
For the budget.
That budget, so that we can have it outlined.
Yep.
You know, if it's to start, you know, starting internally in January, these things are reported, so that way that gives us an insight into when we need to make this decision so that we can move forward.
That's good. We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Susan sat down, but actually, she's going to give an update on the food service. Or maybe, were you going to do it or someone else? Yeah.
Sorry, I know y'all are tired of me up and down for my charity. So last month, Dr. Morrison, you had asked questions about our food service contract, and y'all recall that last summer, we ordered a new contract to make a change, which is exciting. There had been a big request for more variety than what we previously had, and hot choices and so on, and so we wanted to give you an update. All of the campuses switched over at the beginning of the fall semester, and there has been a little bit of a delay in some of the kitchen equipment that they are required to provide, so they haven't completely taken over catering at this point, so we're using other options for that, but that is resolving itself quickly. But feedback so far has been good, that people are appreciating the wider variety. The other thing you'll note in the informational memo is that Trinity River Campus will switch over over winter break, because we continued that through the fall to make an easier transition there because of the full service that already existed, but happy to answer any questions.
Can you remind me, do we have a contract with them that they pay us or they rent? How does that work?
Yes, so they pay us a commission on, or I don't think we call it a commission, anyway, whatever the word is that we use for that. Yeah, as a percentage of the sales that they have, yes.
Thank you.
Very good. So Susan, were you going to present the Title IX report, or was that Oswaldo?
So actually, we were just wondering, that we don't see him here, that we actually had intended to have him here available for any questions. This is a routine report that you receive every year, that we are required to report to the state how many Title IX complaints that we had, how many actually warranted an investigation as a Title IX. They may end up being investigated for other purposes. As you can see, there was an uptick this fall, or this year, because of the return to campus before we were all home, and so you can imagine that there were fewer complaints, but nothing of concern that we noted here, but we can certainly get him back in front of you if you have any questions.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Occasionally, Mr. Greenhill sends us an update from ACCT on legislative issues, and I read that. Just want to let you know that, first of all. But secondly, at the meeting that a number of us attended in New York recently, I did attend the legislative update session, and one of the key issues of interest to community colleges is the impact that the evolution of Title IX and reporting will have and continue to have on our campuses. And so I just, I think that's one area that, A, I appreciate you forwarding that information to us, but that will have significant staffing issues as it, for a number of years, a lot of those changes, no judgment on the changes themselves, but they're largely unfunded mandates in terms of our state and our federal reporting. So I think that's another example of a forecast that we can all just better educate ourselves on when it comes to budgeting, because there will be an impact.
And I think what's tricky along those lines, and Carol may want to add a little bit more, but with the change in administration and the promulgation of rules around that, it changes substantially the potential impact of that, right? And so we end up finding ourselves in a little bit of a waiting, or holding pattern, waiting for further guidance, and so I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Good afternoon, I'm Carol Bracken. I'm general counsel of the college. Just wanted to note for you that approximately, just not quite 60 days ago, we received a new series of regulations, proposed regulations from the Department of Education on Title IX. The 60-day comment period is either up or almost up, I can't tell you which. There will be a period of time after that before the Department of Education makes a decision and actually promulgates new rules, and then there will be a period after that before they become, they go into effect. The changes that have been proposed so far are not quite as sweeping as the ones we saw in the previous administration, but they are still substantial, and we will plan to update the board with respect to those changes once we know exactly what they are. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And yes, you're right, it is a completely unfunded mandate. Thank you, Carol.
Okay, very good. So real quickly, you have a number of, you have reading material. We emailed to you two memos and backup material that we made, also made hard copies for you for your convenience. One of the items that we wanted to make sure you had a few minutes to fill out was the assessment of the facilitator for the board retreat that we had last Saturday. So if you would do that, we will send it to her. It's important to her to get that information. And we've mentioned these magazines, but the Reach magazine has some really important information that is shared in the community, and the other that I was really pleased with, Shannon Bryant helped lead this part, is The Lens, and it's from Cradle to Career, and it has really excellent articles about T3 and all the different partnerships that we have. So it's something to be really proud of, the hard work is paying off, so thank you very much for that. And at the end of your packet, you also have the 12-month board calendar, so that's my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. LeBlanc, and yes, kudos to everyone that's involved in The Lens and The Reach magazines, they're so informative. Thank you so much for that. On the calendar, just wanted to make sure everybody noted that we will be having just the one meeting in December. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's going to be the work session, that's going to be our board meeting, so just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. And then also, Dr. LeBlanc, I know that we talked about doing like a Saks 101 audit type of session, so if we can look at some dates that's appropriate so that we can have that, maybe at one of our board's work sessions would be great.
That would be good.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, around credit, yeah, just get a Saks 101 type of class.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Dr. Morrison.
For clarity.
Yes.
December 8th meeting will be at 2:00.
That's correct. It's going to be at 2:00.
Right, so December 8th, we were having the holiday lunch, board members and cabinet members together, and this, the meeting would be immediately after.
So we wouldn't meet again after that, and the next meeting would be in January?
Right. We were initially going to have a work session, and we're really moving the board meeting up to when the work session was scheduled.
There's some things that we still have to get covered before the end of the year, so we're going to have a meeting then.
So we'll be arriving, and then correct for lunch.
Yes, and we'll make sure we send you another friendly reminder on that.
Yes, okay. Ms. Bracken, we have no, okay, great. So if there are no further questions, comments, I guess entertain a motion to resign. Okay, Mr. Barr? Second by Ms. Wood. Okay, we are adjourned, and we'll see you next week. Thank you, everyone, for attending.